All right, everyone, welcome to regular town council meeting, town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, July 19th, 2021. Mr. Arlen, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? From the vast audience I picked you out. Brian, is there people looking at us online? How many you got?
We've got five attendees.
Five attendees. Okay, I just want to point out something. Councilman Sova today got emails from me requesting that he purchase gift cards and to the tune of three of them for 500 bucks apiece and send them and take pictures of the front and back and send them off to somebody. That email address is now blocked. I have now nor I will I ever ask anyone, anyone, to send me a dang gift card from anywhere. So if you get that, it's a spoof, it's a bunch of garbage, don't do it. I guess if you need if you need emergency healthcare, I understand you can go to Abrazo now. We had a thing on Thursday and I think they were beginning accepting patients today.
They are?
That's what they said.
No, I don't think so. They told me a few weeks.
Did they tell you a few weeks? They told me Monday when I asked earlier. Okay, if you if don't get sick yet. Okay, so anyway, don't don't believe me when I when I tell you everything. All right. Call the public. I bet Mr. Arlen is. Oh, I'm sorry, roll call. Good grief.
Thank you.
Well, we hadn't had a meeting in a while.
Are you getting older?
I am getting old.
Councilmember Roy A. Here. Councilmember Morris. Councilmember McGuire. Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Deefen Duffer. Councilmember Sova. Mayor Bunch.
Oh, here. Now we can do that, right?
David Phelps.
Hello, this is David Phelps. I would like to welcome everybody back and I would very to know. I would like to know, I'll tell you what, I need to get a couple of things together. Can Mr. Arlen go in first place and I can get this stuff written down and.
Someone's talking, but we can't hear.
He's asked if Mr. Arlen can go and get them together.
He's he's trying to get it straightened out.
Okay, you want Bruce Arlen to go now?
Jane, call Bruce Arlen.
I'm sorry. Bruce Arlen.
Hello, everybody.
Hi, Bruce.
So I handed out each one of you has a Maricopa County Planning and Development Department.
Have you got a red light in your microphone? No, you do.
There we go. So everybody, the council has a Maricopa County Planning and Development Department, nine sheets, which concerns something that I'm concerned about, which is Maricopa County is speaking with the advertise the billboard lobby in Maricopa County, Phoenix. And they are pushing for a gigantic expansion of a proliferation of billboards, larger ones, most importantly, digital billboards. Okay, and as well as billboards that would be, is my understanding even closer together in terms of distance from each other. Now, there's a lot of language in their proposals, which tries to like, you know, any group lobbying tries to mitigate the problem, but they want what they want. And I'm saying that somebody who's a founder of Cave Creek Dark Sky Initiative, that it would be the wrong thing to do. So why am I bringing it up to the council? It's Maricopa County. Here's what I'm requesting tonight, and time is of the essence. Frankly, I am asking the council to basically come together as one and essentially compose a letter to Maricopa County on this issue so that Cave Creek as one from our leaders will say, you know, we oppose the expanding billboards in Maricopa County. The closest one, my understanding, is the corridor at Carefree Highway and the I-17 starting to go south. But it does affect us. We are in the county. It is more light pollution in a big, big way amongst all the other things that all that kind of stuff will do. Lot of distraction. And I'm asking you to do that. Now, Councilmember Roy A. has already written to the county and she already opposes this effort by by the billboard industry. And I don't know who could do it. Maybe she could do it, you know, compose a letter and hopefully you guys will like the letter. Maybe you'll even have some input and you will all sign it. And on behalf of the citizens of Cave Creek, we can at least make a stand and and oppose this kind of expansion. And that's really all I wanted to say. It's as plain as that. A lot of the information is in the nine pages that I gave everybody. And there's also a meeting. So time is of the essence. My understanding is the July 22 meeting is now delayed till August 5. Why? Because there was a lot of pushback by people in the county. And I do believe that the lobby, this is a guess on my part, I do believe that the lobby, billboard lobby is reconstituting their arguments. And so maybe they're a little bit on their back heel. I don't know. But I would like to have Cave Creek stand up together. It would be a nice thing. Thank you.
Mr. Arlen, whom do we address?
It's all on there, actually. Also, if you do want to do that, I can send you the names of the commissioners. Would you like that?
It would be the board of supervisors.
It's not the county supervisors, I believe. I think it's the planning and zoning department that's what that's conducting the hearings.
Mr. Sims, wouldn't they have to go through the supervisor to get that?
Their commission has as little power as yours does. It has to go through the supervisor.
It would ultimately get to their.
To the county supervisors? Okay, so do you need any information from me regarding that?
No, no, and we need to move on.
Mr. Mayor.
Question, Mr. Mayor.
We're really not supposed to be dialoguing back and forth unless.
This is not for Mr. Arlen. It's for our town attorney. The sign ordinances, billboard ordinances, et cetera, we have in our town covered by our ordinances would stay in place. What the county does on county property would not affect us at all, other than if they're lit and it's near our town borders.
As you know, there was that case when all the way to Supreme Court, it really makes it difficult to police up signs. But in this case, dark skies is something you can do. So you have the power, you exercise the power. The county can't exercise their power in emergency.
Thank you.
Except that the lights would shine outside of our our town properties. I mean, come on. I don't think there would be any harm done in us sending a letter. And I would propose that I'd like to write it and have.
This is not agendas. We're not really supposed to be discussing.
We're going beyond now. What you can do is to say, put it on an agenda.
Our next meeting isn't until next month at this time, which is too late. So how do we take action, Mr. Simpson, before then?
Individually, everyone can 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 send a letter to the planning commission and the superintendent.
So we can't coordinate a joint effort before next month? So we have to do it individually.
Thank you.
Now, is Mr. Phelps handy?
Hello, this is David Phelps. Can you hear me?
We cannot hear you.
I guess I could call in.
Does he have a microphone he needs to turn on?
He is, looks like he's unmuted on his side.
Can you hear me now? I'm trying to call in.
He's trying to phone in. I'm hearing him just a little bit in my headphones.
Go ahead and go forward with the agenda. I'll try to get a line through to Brian and see if we can't work this out. Sorry for the inconvenience.
Okay, he's he's, I think he's gonna try and phone me.
Just go ahead and move on with the agenda. Brian, tell him to go ahead and go forward with the agenda. I'm go I'm okay. I'll just catch up later.
He's saying to move forward.
Do what? All right, here we go. There's no town manager here, so I guess we're not having our town manager report. Consent agenda, acceptance deed of gift for 1,413 square foot wide public trail pathway easement parcel 211 dash 11 dash zero 48D and approval to June 21st, 2021 regular council meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
So moved second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, excluded, have it. General agenda item number one, council approval of engagement letter with Wibbush Securities Incorporated to serve as municipal advisor to the town.
Our members of council, it will be Pat Walker. She'll be on Zoom along with Jim Strickland and Tim Stratton.
Mayor Council, can you hear me? Mayor Council?
We're not hearing you.
Yeah, mine's off mute. I was hearing David Phelps. Fine. So something's not turned on in in Cave Creek.
Nope.
Hold on, Pat, while we take a few moments to correct our audio.
Has someone asked Jim to speak to see if he's coming through?
Jim, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Pat.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's not coming through either.
No, nobody is.
Nod your head yes if you can hear me. Okay.
Oh, we got a lot of nodding.
We got it one way. Now let me tell you what you're gonna say.
Hold up a piece of paper.
They can hear each other.
Oh. Wow.
That's interesting.
Can you hear me? This is David.
I see Jim is muted.
This is getting really kind of scary.
Yeah, but he wasn't. He unmuted and tried to talk and didn't work.
I can hear you, David.
Well, then I'm having the meeting with the people I really need to talk to.
We all get so self-conscious when this technology doesn't work and normally it's the technology.
Six six zero six?
No, that is the one.
That is it?
Yep. Yes, it'd be one at a time.
Can any of you walk like Charlie Chaplin?
We would we would have to do a conference call to them. Yes, we can do that.
Yeah.
We'll take five minutes. Yeah, I've been asked for us to take a five minute break while they try and get this under control. So I think it's a recess for five minutes.
So I've got my phone on as well, but I don't want to. I don't want to bring it up because I'm afraid of the feedback effects.
Right. I think the feedback would be bad if you have that up.
Yeah, yeah, I've made that big mistake before, but I can't get Brian to give me a sign on the on the screen here that he sees me called in.
Yeah, we can see that you're talking. It's on their end, I think.
Okay.
And you were on before when you were on the computer, I could hear you.
Interesting. Well, I must still be on the computer. Brian hasn't shut me off of the computer. Is that what's going on?
Must be. If you hang up, you're still on, right?
Okay, I just hung up.
Okay.
Amazing stuff.
Your pay is being cut.
Jane just told me I had my mask on backwards.
Can we trust anything you say?
You know, they got little ones that are small.
Yeah, I know.
They go over your ears. So you don't have to hear anything. You don't want.
Pat, this Michelle.
Is not working. Is that our problem?
Zoom is working.
Well, the video, but not the audio.
Apparently, every one of them.
Yes. Okay.
Phone's ringing. That means it's at least hooked up. You gotta do. Gotta do the.
They could each call one of our cell phones.
Actually, save time if you don't get any council decisions based on what is already written for us.
Can't do that.
Oh, can't do that.
I have questions.
I've only got, what, eight here?
Eight questions?
Yeah.
I've got three, maybe three or four.
I'm sure mine have more important. Jim, yours are probably trivial.
Yours are trivial detail.
Yes, I can. I'm afraid I'm gonna have feedback, though.
That's how Congress does it. Or reporters do it.
Did you click on attendees or analysts? Because it looks like you're logged as an attendee.
On speaker and then just put by a microphone that should.
Can you just do a three way call?
I just love modern technology.
Me?
Brian sent me a phone number to call and I called that phone number and I talked to Tim.
Okay, good. I clicked on the email that Brian sent us.
Yeah, no, I did the same. And that's how I got where you are. But Tim somehow is on the attendees list or was on the attendees list. Yeah, you're not on the attendees list anymore, Tim. Is this Brian?
Tim got the email like we did.
Tim, I think your feedback.
Okay, okay.
What if we just do an iPhone and call those two numbers and talk on the iPhone and put the iPhone in the background? Just do a three way call on it.
Yeah.
So why don't we just call Pat? We have to do the same with the show.
Yeah. I can hear you, Tim.
Person who's called in will be muted on their side. They can hear.
I can hear you, too.
On my call.
Yeah, so on my on my calendar invite, I have a little bit of a key horse. Pat Walker. Jim Strickland clicked to join.
Did you guys hear that? If you guys mute your Zoom call, I think that should work.
Click on that, it doesn't seem like I can hear you. Is that how you got in?
Yes, I clicked on it. So did Pat.
Okay, so if I click on it, it should take me there.
They have to get off their.
Yeah, are you guys muted your Zoom calls by chance? You are, okay, I hear one.
We're gonna kill this conference line. We try redo the Zoom. We're gonna kill this conference line and we're actually gonna restart the Zoom again and see if that resets the system. So we're just getting too much feedback. So Ryan probably killed.
All right, what we're gonna do now is we're gonna go ahead and and come back to that. They're gonna try and get the technical issues solved. And we will go to the agenda item number five, which is presentation to council, the quarterly utility report. Sean got laryngitis.
Mayor Bunch, would you notify the public that we may also, they may also lose the Zoom feed?
Yeah, you're you're.
And then it'll come back.
Right, you're at to lose the Zoom feed. We're gonna they're gonna shut the system down and come back. So we're gonna get the quarterly report while this is going on. So we can move on, move forward this evening. Presentation only, there's no public comment on this. Will we have, will when you shut it down, are we gonna lose the 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 copy that we're making of of the meeting?
We lose the video, but the audio that's being recorded at Jane's.
So so when if they come back to the to the town website and want to see what Sean had to say this evening, will they will they be able to do that?
We will include the audio in the video that gets put on YouTube.
Okay, so it will be available. Okay.
What are you doing that, Brian? Can you pull up the presentation or not? Okay, you get your paper and I guess we can get it up. So thank you, Mayor Council. Time due for our quarterly utility report. So that's what the action item is tonight, which is more just again, information only. So we're trying to look at providing you information different ways to give you ideas of what's going on in the system. The first slide is our it's entitled Cave Creek Water Treatment. That's actually the flows that come out of our water treatment plant that we deliver from the water treatment plant to our Neri facility that then gets distributed through the system. You can see that we've overlaid the 2019, 2020, and the 2021 to date flows. So you can see the trend, we're actually trending up a little bit in June when 2021, we had a little bit of a spike in 2019. And then obviously with COVID being a strange year, we typically would see a peak towards the end of the summer. We've we've maxed out our we've hit our max day peak, but then max month actually usually occurs a little bit later in the summer. So we're curious with this trend that we're seeing, how much water consumption we will see through the through the end of the summer. It has been a little exceptionally warm. It has cooled off, though. But as you can see, the red trend there, we are going up a little bit. The next slide is more related to billing. It's entitled Cave Creek CAP Water Treatment. Its consumption totals as billed through the system is what we've done here. So you can see that sort of grass next to each other. The 2019 data is the blue, 2020 data, which we have full years for, is red. And then we have yellow, which is the 2021 year to date. So this is just a different way of looking at it. It's also in instead of million gallons of treated water, it's actually acre feet per month that we have sent out. And this is coming from our casel billing system. So we do a report at the end of the month to see where we are in billings out into the system. You can see similar to the water production, the June data set is a little bit above the prior years. So we're interested to see if that continues through the rest of the summer.
Sean, would you compare that those numbers to our typical 2100 acre foot purchases from cap? What's the 800 or 750 acre feet difference?
So this is just billings within Cave Creek. It does not include the billings to Desert Hills that are sent to Desert Hills or Ranch Mignana. So that's why the numbers look a little little odd when you look at it again, as Councilmember Morris brought up. We typically are ordering about 21 acre 2100 acre feet of CAP water a year. And of that, in total, it's been about 1,500 goes to the Cave Creek system, which is our Cave Creek and the Carefree customers directly connected to our system. A little bit of the water is sent to Ranch Mignana and the rest is sent to Desert Hills. So it's you have to look at it and how you're look. In this case, it's just the billings that we're looking at. So our goal is to really try and get down to a non-revenue number, which is really, you know, as a state water provider, we're mandated to actually have a loss, what's called a non-revenue loss on our account for water. So we're looking at different ways to skin that data set to let us find out where we're to. So we're looking at different ways to, to skin that data set to, to let us find it where we're efficient and where we can do better. The next one is actually, it's in CAP, entitled Cave Creek CAP Water Treatment, it's really the, this is the billings to Desert Hills. So as you can see, again, it's the stack graphs again, 2019, 2020, we have a full year four, and 2021 is the yellow. So in actual deliveries to Desert Hills, we're a little bit behind the schedule from last year. Last year, we actually had, middle of summer, we actually had one of the wells go down, so that's sort of anticipated a little bit, so it's ironic that we're getting a little bit more consumption in the Cave Creek water system. But actual billings out to Desert Hills or extra water we're sending to Desert Hills has actually dropped a little bit since last year. We do anticipate overall, if you look back more than 10 years, typical allocation we've been giving to Desert Hills or the amount of water we've had to supplement out there has been about 400 acre feet. Last two years, it's been creeping above 600 acre feet, this year, overall projection, we're thinking about 600, well, end up around 650 acre feet of water that we're sending out to Desert Hills. And that's largely due to the drop in the, the well production in that area.
Sean, do we expect that to continue to have reason to think that, that will be reduced or increased?
Yes, Mayor and Councilman McGuire, we don't anticipate, from our understanding, the geology out in Desert Hills, it's a shallow sub-basing on its own. So as the water table drops out in that area, the water production actually drops faster. It's not being recharged and it's basically its own little bathtub, in effect. So this is why one of the actions tonight is talking about CAP renewable water allocation, although not as, as secure as the town's, and I waters, it's getting some water resources for Desert Hills while we still run that system.
Are, are we still issuing will serve letters in Desert Hills?
At this point, we are.
What's the ETA on the water policy?
We've got a draft internally, so it's actually talking with our town's attorney tonight, so we're gonna talk internally and get that routed back around to staff.
We have a policy, we owe you ordnance, and Michelle is working on that.
Looks like the sooner the better.
So our next chart is our entitled Cave Creek Water Ranch Monthly Flows, this is the effluent that actually is treated and then sent back up. We measure this at the, the backend meter, the effluent meter at our water ranch, our wastewater treatment plant. What's interesting, you can see that when the 2020 trend is we're, we're way below the typical average, which we're sort of surprised as, because we, we did see after the COVID restrictions were restricted, or released, a, a bit of a bump in March, but then it's dropped back down and we're below average, so we're not really sure, we're, we're watching that trend. It, the struggle with that is that the, the plant in the summertime is it's low flow, so there's less flows coming in, but it's actually less nutrients for the biological treatment. So it becomes a struggle for our staff to actually keep the plant running, so we sometimes, it's the terminology we use, we have to feed the bugs during the summertime to keep them alive. So we, we actually have to give them material to consume so that they're ready for this to fall, which we know the fall will increase. And then obviously, our delivery to Ranch Minyana is very important to us, so the next couple of graphs are talking about that delivery. This is the, the total deliveries in acre feet that have been sent to Ranch Minyana, again, we're trying to give you historical perspective by doing 2019, 2020, and 2021 to year to date. We're a little bit below our typical average being sent up there, and that's partly because the, the effluent values have gone down and they haven't been requesting as much water from us to make up. So the summertime is usually when they, they, because of evaporation loss on the ponds, when we usually actually get larger water orders from them. So that may change as the summer continues. The next one is trying to break down, just again, looking at Ranch Minyana, is the deliveries, and this is just year to date, trying to break down so council is aware. Again, we only started in May of actually delivering raw cap water up the pipeline to them. The red bar graph is the amount of effluent sent from our ran, our water ranch, and then, or sorry, the water treatment plant reclaimed water, that's effectively the, the processed water from the water treatment plant. Instead of us sending it down sewer, we send it up to Ranch Minyana, and then the wastewater is the blue on the bottom, and you can see that dropping down. So as our water production increases during the summertime, we do generate more reclaimed to what we call reclaimed water from the, the wastewater treatment plant, and that's just inherent in the process. The staff are trying to optimize that, we're looking at different ways, we're trying to run the pall membrane system as, as efficiently as we can. Those two trailers, they'll only produce 2 million gallons a day, so we're above that type of demands, we have to run the old Trident filters and they're more inefficient. So we're looking at ways we can optimize that system, continuing to look at that. The last chart on the Ranch Minyana golf course is just, well, she's, one more table for her, is deliveries. And this is an attempt to try and give council again another look at what we call the non-revenue water for that system. And the next chart gives you some more tabulated information on that. So when we say the top, the blue chart is the town meter readings, that's the combination of the meters, so it's our effluent meter at the, the wastewater treatment plant. It's the reclaimed processed water at the water treatment plant and the raw cap meter. So as you can see in 20, and it's not a full year comparison, you can see 2021 is just year to date. But we send a lot of water up there and the way the contract is written is that they bill for the water that is consumed out of the lake, not as what we deliver to them. So in 2019, there's a total of 189 acre feet of non-revenue water, 2020, that dropped a little bit, and we're at 64 acre feet right now. The summertime is usually, there's a lot of evaporative loss, but then the wintertime is actually a lot of overflow from the lake system. And the table in the next.
Sean?
Slide helps explain that.
On that one, are we working on, on trying to get credit for what goes into the creek that?
That's actually something I do wanna work on, to see what we can do, if we can get through the, get a permit for that and we can generate some recharge credits for that.
Like 50% or something?
Yeah, the way I think the ADWR rules work is that if you have a managed facility, you can get 95% credit. This would be an unmanaged facility, this would be 50% credit. We have to look at though, when we send that over, then there's actually requirements for monitoring and some other stuff, so we have to look at overall what that permit's gonna require, because right now it's just overflowing and, and running down a ancillary creek into Cave Creek wash, so we'd have to look at, do we have the legal right to be in that area and everything, so. But it is something that we wanna look at overall. As, as you can see in this next table, you know, the amount of, and this is about an 18-month period of times, we went from January of last year. It shows the, the first column is the wastewater treatment effluent in acre feet per month. Then we have the water treatment, the reclaimed water, and cap divert water is actually what we call the water we divert from the pall membrane system. And then the, the next is the raw cap water deliveries, you can see, again, it's in the summertime that they ask for raw water deliveries. So we have the total amount delivered to the ponds and then the total billed. So the third and fourth to last columns, there's a third called pond overflow and pond evaporation. So the pond overflow, we do actually have a meter on the overflow, and you can see last year, 73 acre feet of water overflowed the pond system. That happens in the wintertime. But then corresponding in the, the summertime, you have the pond evaporation, so where we got this number from is actually, we worked with Maricopa County. Maricopa County keeps an evaporative pan system up at Lake Pleasant, so we actually pulled down that data set. So they actually have an evaporation meter that's constantly filling and refilling, you have to pull the data set out and normalize it. So it's actually almost double the evaporation that you normally use, it was a rule of thumb, but we thought that using the Lake Pleasant evaporator meter gives us a, a good measure of what actually is being lost by that lake system up there, so.
Water temp is gonna make a huge difference on that, isn't it?
It's not in the, the lake, it's next to the lake.
Next to the lake, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I actually wanna go up and see it, but they've actually got it online, they actually download the data set so you can, you can pull it off. So Hal Marin actually pointed out to us and we were able to get to their website and pull off the raw data set from them. So what it really shows to us is, is again, in the wintertime, we're producing more water than they can consume and we overflow the lake, and in the summertime, there's a lot of evaporation. So we do wanna bring them to the table, talk to them about how the contracts are structured right now and see if there's anything we can do. The pond evaporation, there are things you can do, I know they use the ponds as, as a aesthetic feature at the, the golf course. But you know, this is, this is a lot of water being evaporated off a lake that we're delivering, we're not getting any credit for, so it's not, not a good situation for the town.
I have a question for you. Using the numbers here, on the previous set of numbers, there was approximately 1,290 acre feet of water that were utilized within the Cave Creek water system. If you subtract the 378 that are going to go to Carefree, in which you're probably already going to Carefree one way or another, that brings you down to 912. There are 293 acre feet between the reclaim and diversion water and the raw cap water. That means that 32% of the water for Cave Creek is going to Ranch Minyana. Is that correct?
As an overall water calculation, including tree of effluent, yes.
32%.
Yeah, if you look at your overall water balance.
And a substantial amount of that is non-revenue, right?
Correct, that's what, I know, since I've been here, this, it's been a, a topic, that's where.
Recording in progress.
That's why the, the pond overflow meter was put in place, just after, before I started, it was put in place, we had some issues the first year with it, so we have staff monitoring that. So we want to know the total of going into that system. It's not the most efficient system is really what we're coming down to, and the fact that the way it's structured contractually, that they only bill for what they draw off of the lakes, not what we deliver to the ra, the lakes, is the, the structural problem.
I got a question about the meters. Our meter shows we deliver a heck of a lot of water. Their meter shows we don't deliver a heck of a lot of water, substantially less. Why? I know you've answered this before, but.
Yeah, yeah, that, that's just inherent in the system, if, if, we showed a graphic up, but it's actually a three-lake system. So we have two pipelines that run up to, to the golf course, the one is the effluent line that runs all the way from the water ranch and, and gets pumped up, there's two effluent pumps at the water ranch that, that deliver that flow up to the, up to the golf course. And there's also a, a, an eight-inch line that runs from the, the water treatment plant up and over to the lake, so there's two points of delivery into the, the upper lake system, so. And the, the upper two lakes actually cascade into each other, upper, we fill, cascades in the lower, they're fairly shallow lakes, and then the larger holding lake is, is the third lake, and that's where they draw their water from. So the way the contract is structured is that we deliver water to them, and then they only get charged for the water they draw off the bottom end of it. So again, since we know the pond overflow, so in the wintertime, we fill the lake up to capacity and there actually is an overflow, like last year, calendar year 2020, 73 acre feet of water actually overflowed that lake system that they could not use. Largely because of wintertime, when their flows, their irrigation demands are so low, that's when we have the highest effluent flow ever at our water treatment plant, so.
So we've got enough wastewater, either effluent or.
Yeah, processed water from the, the.
So that we, we push it over there, but they don't utilize it.
Yes, yeah, it's either being lost by pond overflow or pond evaporation and/or some liner losses would be the third component. So the lake system itself has, has some structural issues with the leaking. In the past, it was thought that more of the flow was going to liner losses, but when we were able to get this data set from Maricopa County on evaporation, that sort of skewed the numbers more towards the, the lakes themselves, the evaporation is a lot more than we would have expected.
Okay, so that, from what, you know, what I've said, I think the most impressive number is 32% of our water goes to Ranch Minyana.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's obviously something that we're, we wanna talk to them about, we've gone to billing with, we used to do annual bills, now we're, we did. We always wanna get to monthly billing with them to help balance, but we do need to talk to them about the overall efficiency of that delivery system and that, that water system with them. Next chart is our water loss chart, and I'll point out right now that our June data set is missing some data set. So we didn't get the flushing data in, in time to, to get this updated. But you can see in February, we had some compliance flushing, we had some large line breaks that occurred. Again, this is one of these things that we monitor, this is part of our non-revenue loss water in the system. From ADR, ADWR perspective, when they look at our water accounting, we don't really get credit for this, but if we know where it's going, that allows us to better manage it. So again, the June data set is missing, but we are trying to do this, but one of the inherent things in our water system is that we have to, to do a fair amount of flushing on our distribution lines, because we don't have a lot of consumption in some areas. And to, to keep the water fresh, and that's just a problem that we have. And I introduced these, I think, a couple meetings ago, the next two are, are non-revenue calculations, we're trying to look at, the first one's Cave Creek and Carefree totals. We're looking at the total deliveries versus what we bill through our casel system. We are seeing a few differences when, when things are actually being monitored and measured, that we're trying to clean up. We can see right now, our, our non-billed water in Cave Creek is, is increasing now, we're getting into the summertime, so we're gonna, we're gonna see what we can do to try and bring that clush together. We do, I was just talking with staff today, we think it might have been a, a little bit of a timing factor, but not as much, in Desert Hills, we have a timing factor, when the, the wells were red. We have three production wells, and when they were red versus when we did the billing data set, can have a little bit of a difference, it's surprising, we actually did an analysis looking at a weak shift in data sets, and that actually had a fairly significant amount in percentage-wise. So we're trying to make sure that every reads the same day.
Sean, I wanna compliment you on this kind of data, this monitoring, how much we, how much goes through the cash register versus how much goes on the ground. This is the kind of stuff we really need, I know you put this in place and you deserve credit for that, thank you.
Again, it's good operation of the system, we need to know where the water's going and where we're getting our generated revenue. So the next one is, it's labeled non-revenue water and we will change the title, it's our Desert Hill system. So in the, the steep increase, or in May, we think the issue was the, the reading of the, the meters versus when the, the, our product, our, our, our account meters were red. There was a time shift of a couple of days and that actually had a significant difference out there when the, the increase was occurring, but our goal is to keep this going and make sure everything's in sync. One of the things I will point out is one project that we gotta resurrect is actually going back to the CAP meter, so the, before I started, there was an issue with the, the overall meter in the cap pipeline at our cap delivery booster station. A temporary meter was inserted back in 2017, it's been in place, and that was supposed to be replaced as part of the, the upgrade to the CAP booster station. So that meter really needs to be updated to something more like a magnetic flow meter, right now it's just an insertion meter, so we believe that's adding to some of our. So it goes back to overall accounting, you know, how much water are we pushing up the pipeline? There's a question and CAP has asked us to, to install a more accurate meter, and that, that's our base calculation, is you know, what's coming up the pipeline versus, you know, we have all the meters at the top end, where it goes in the plant, and they don't calculate on the daily average. In some days, we're actually making water if you actually add all the meters together, so we need to get that reconciled. Switching over into our wastewater system, our collection system is, see, we have the grease traps. I'd say at advantage, but with everything going on with COVID, again, there's been a drop in the usage, so it looks, everybody has been in compliance and keeping up with their wastewater grease trap systems, your interceptor systems.
Sean, a question, I, I have noticed anecdotally that we do not seem to have had a odor problem down at the water ranch since we began vigorously enforcing grease regulations, is, is that your impression, Tim?
In the two years I've been here, we have done a few things, I think the grease trap interceptor program, pretreatment system, has helped. We've also tried, we've had, you know, we cleaned the main line for the first time in a number of years down there, and we were being very aggressive with the bi oxide treatment that we use at the Ranch Minyana lift station site that helps keep down odors overall.
But we've not had any complaints down there in some time, man.
No, no, we've been working directly with the neighbors, you know, we've, we've brought them on board, we've talked to them, we've showed them what's going on, we've actually taken their input and, and the staff have really been trying to work with them. You know, sewer odors are, are, they're just obnoxious, so you know, we try to be as, as proactive as we can, sometimes it's as simple as cleaning a line out. You could have a, a belly in line that's holding some material up, so that's us being proactive on the collection system and managing that. And there are some cases where we are do, doing chemical odor treatment, so we're trying to optimize that, because it's not cheap, but it's also effective, but, so we have to balance that out. Wanted to give council some updates on just our water availability, so one thing that we've been trying to work on, and I'll give credit to my staff, is we've been trying to pull together all the certificates of assured water supply. Since I've been here, I've looked back and I can, I found, the earliest document I could find is dated 2002, as far as Cave Creek Water Company, it was private water company, as far as ADWR, was, was doing a spreadsheet, trying to do a certificate, listing all the certificates and trying to account for them all. But there's always been some overlaps, and so there's been some asterisks in the tables, which talked about that the potentially could be some duplicates. And that, you know, really it's on us as a water provider to clean that up and work with ADWR staff to clean that up. So we thought in February, we took the effort to go through all the certificates that we had, we downloaded as much as we can, looked through our files, pulled it all together, and of 103 certificates that we could see listed, we were missing 22. So we made that public records request back in February, it was just actually received from them in July, so you know, government agencies, they're short-staffed, they have. It was just actually received from them in July. So um, you know, government agencies, they're short-staffed. Uh, they have given us, there's actually four certificates they couldn't find all the records on, so we're just seeing how we pull that together. But the next slide I'll show is we've actually been trying to map these to try and see where the overlaps are, so we can pull this all together. So I know that's one question I I often get is where are we at with the water allocation? Because uh certificates of assured water supply have been issued against the CAP allocation, and and where do we stand in that? Some of the certificates actually also um talk about cold mingled water, uh groundwater as well as CAP water. So we're trying to map that out also. Which ones included groundwater? We're right now, we currently are not using the town's groundwater allocation. Our production wells not in service, but that's something we want to look at moving forward. You know, is there some benefit to us trying to bring the wells back online? And that's part of the overall water portfolio for the for the town and the water resources system.
Can I have a quick question?
Yes.
Sean, um, could you tell me how much water we have in our storage tanks?
At this time, I'd have to go back and look at it. Uh, you know, in the main system, we have the two reservoirs we keep active, the near reservoir and then the rock uh uh Rockaway reservoir. Um, nearly we try to keep fairly full just because of the amount of water goes in. It's only a million gallon reservoir. I don't have that number in front of me, but typically we're running Rockaway about half full. Uh, if it fluctuates because of water quality issues in that area, uh Rockways about two million gallons, two point two theoretically. So we're running about a million gallons of storage up in Rockaway, and then uh about less than just under half, uh less than a million gallons in 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 uh at the near reservoir.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you know, it's something we have to balance uh in the water system because you can't just keep the reservoirs completely full. You can mix them up, but you still need to get that water out of it, and it's it's hard. And the the positioning of the Rockaway site is a bit of a challenge for staff just because I understand why it was placed up there for system overall system reliability. I thought that it can help backfeed the main system in a gravity situation. But uh pending a a large water demand, that water sits up there unless we try to force it in and out of that reservoir and and water age is 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 the the bane of water systems. So. Um, so the answer to your question is will serve letters. So we are, we have a data set as pro- approximately uh four hundred and twenty will serve letters that we we track. Two hundred and twenty six in Cave Creek, hundred sixty six in Desert Hills, thirty two in Carefree. And uh we approximately again about fourteen a month. So not all of those are approved. Some of them are, we're up to say no to. We've got, she had a couple come through where someone's done what we consider a a subdivision, a a lot split, totaling more than four lots in the county. I think their their threshold's one lot higher. So we've had a couple of people that say no to because you've done the lot splits and stuff subdivision for the water policy. In other cases, it's just they need to do line extension. So we wanted to give you just some numbers. I'll try and get you a better table next next one.
And I've got a question, Mr. Sims, you might want to pay attention to this one too. If you look at this slide, we're just talking about the water availability. Uh, there's uh thirty two will serve letters in Carefree.
Sean is working on the operational policy. Those will have to be transferred to Carefree pursuant to the.
Yeah, because they come out of that award portion of of their account. Okay, just want to make sure we're I I figured we were on top of it, but it's kind of important.
And and that's actually also a that that's also will serves, but there's also certificates. Actually, I see something I want to talk to because Carefree has started the process of of the transfer of the water allocation. Um, but I do want to make sure that ADWR accounts for the certificates that are in Carefree that they're taking with them so that those get transferred over and they're not added in our pot. So that's one of the reasons for us making sure that we've got them all accounted for and say those are all them.
Not another draw or not another draw or allocation above me on.
Yeah, so again, Carefree is taking the lead on doing the allocation transfer. I want to follow that up by saying, here's all the certificates you need to take with it. So uh quickly, I think I've uh shown it once before, but again, we're trying to to answer this question. Is there overlaps? Because uh if you're not familiar with their certificate process, it can get com- complicated because you can uh give a certificate for a parcel of land. Uh, you can say that you assume you're going to get a certain density out of it. Uh, example, you might get a hundred, you you're thinking you're gonna lead a a hundred fifty lot or yield a hundred fifty lots out of that. So you you do your certificate, initial certificate. Then you realize that you can't get that, and then you you downgrade that certificate, and then you may makes changes within the area, the the development area where it's not covering the entire area. That's the issue we're having is is stacking them all together. So we're using our GIS system to map them out, find where there's there um issues. And make sure that whenever there's a a stacking situation that they're properly accounted for. And we'll go back to ADWR with this information and and clarify. Again, we can clarify which ones are in in Carefree and which ones are are in our water system. And again, if there's any duplicates, can we get those eliminated and have them agree that there are duplicates? Uh, next slide is just doing update on our capital program and some some operational issues we've got going on there. Uh, so I figure I'd talk about a couple of big ones. We have the interconnect with the city of Phoenix, so we're working uh with Black and Beach on that design. We're working on the conceptual design, preliminary design is what we uh council assess allowed me to award at this point. We're up to a what we call a thirty percent design. So this will be wrapping up the next couple of months, and we'll be coming back now that once we set the parameters for the site layout and some other improvements uh and coming back with what's gonna it's gonna take to complete the design. Um, and as part of that, we're actually looking at overall distribution system because it's it's um bringing this water into uh the system. We're talking about a new million gallon storage reservoir at the site. And then how that will feed and interact with our near system and the booster station up there is is critical because effectively we'll have two ways of delivering water and or distributing because this site can actually feed into the area system is what the intent is. So if we have to take the cap pipeline and the water treatment plant down for either emergency or say a planned outage, if we can do some some uh some longer term significant improvements, we want to make sure we can feed the rest of the system. So um uh as part of that, we're looking at things like uh where fire booster pumps near the near site was built, so it can actually provide the fire flow for main system. So do we need to replicate that down at the the City of Phoenix interconnect? If the two sites are going to work in conjunction, that's a cost savings we can do. So we don't have to put those larger fire pumps at the City of Phoenix interconnect, and I could the the City of Phoenix interconnect site can more meet the uh the uh pressure zone needs for what we call pressure zone one and pressure zone four. So those are the types of discussion. So as we wrap this phase up, and as I come to uh council award the the rest design, I'll probably I'll give you a summary on the preliminary design of that site. So. Uh, we're still trying to get done by the end of twenty twenty three. So two more years. So we're in design phase now. I'll probably start the next phase will be a solicitation I'll do is for a construction manager at risk because I do believe uh doing a alternate delivery where we pre-select a contractor to help be part of the team can help uh yield some some cost savings, some efficiency in the design. Once we set the preliminary design parameters, they can help us figure out what equipment and some other stuff that we want to do or some other ways we can uh can can deal with that. Um, but yeah, we're trying to sync with the uh city of Phoenix uh contractual obligation. So that leads into the city Phoenix disconnect. So we have a you know, two disconnects going on in the system right now. We're working with Carefree uh on their work to disconnect, and then we have city of Phoenix uh working to disconnect the areas south of 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 Carefree Highway in the system. Uh, we just got update that by August, they'll give us a ninety percent design. Uh, they are still at this point looking out to delay the project for actual construction for another year. So they'll wrap up design, get it all permitted, all ready to go. And they've selected contractors to do the work, but just because of funding constraints in their CIP, they've told us they're they're going to put a a gap into the project. So it'll be done by the time that the IGA uh says it needs to be done, which is the end of twenty twenty three. And that's our goal is to have the city uh our our interconnect site up and operational at the same timeframe.
Uh, in the long run, will Phoenix be providing water to all of Cave Creek south of Carefree Highway?
Yes.
Do we know how much water that will put back into the Cave Creek system that will no longer be utilized by those uh businesses and residents?
Uh, you know, I I I thought that same question myself the other week, and I didn't pull the report. There's actually only a handful of meters that are our meters right now south of there. Most of the meters, um, everything uh west of Cave Creek Road is actually a city Phoenix uh distribution meter. We're only providing fire services first, the sprouts to hospital, um tractor supply. So it's really just the meters to um Burger King, uh, the the small mall in front of Walmart that has the Firehouse Subs and Walmart itself. Those are the only meters that we currently have down there that are on our water system.
So we're not going to get thousands of acres.
No. Initially thought, and when I started that calculation, I think it's only four meters that were given up. So um another project we have ongoing is the uh sewer collection system evaluation. So we did a a phase one last year. Uh, we're wrapping into the phase two where we've done some preliminary work. Uh, this uh project helped us uh work and investigate and remap the collection system. So we found, I think it's a total of fifteen manholes now that we had to uh unbury and bring back up to grades. We can get into the lines. And as part of this, they're going to be updating the wastewater model and then wrapping up the um evaluation, which will give us the recommendations moving forward. So it's almost our mini CIP on the collection system. This will be wrapped into our integrated master planning effort, and we'll be uh pretty far ahead because we'll know a lot more about the collection system. They'll actually have a good uh sewer model that we can then run uh scenarios on. So but it's been a good process overall. We found a few areas of concern, and we've been addressing them, and just finding the manholes has been a challenge, and uh give kudos to my staff for working on that. Um, next one I want, did I sort of alluded to, but I talked about is the uh city Carefree uh system disconnect. Um, so we do have the um uh agreement in place with Carefree. Uh, right now, at this point, we're attending weekly meetings with their project team just going over issues. Uh, so they are working on their design for all three neighborhoods. Uh, neighborhood A is the area by Carefree Highway. Neighborhood B is the area south of Cave Creek Road and sort of the uh um I'm trying to think Bella Vista area. And neighborhood C is the area by I I refer to a scope and north of of Cave Creek Road through the town core. Um, so they're focused on on neighborhood C to start with with doing the conversion. So in the last couple of weeks, they've been working on design. They've been actually physically going out and potholing to make sure that they have. It's not just on our disconnects, but actually all the reconnects that they need to do. So they've assembled the project team. They have a construction manager at risk uh that's been selected. They got their designer, and they've actually selected, I think, a firm that's going to do construction administration for them overall. Um, so I think I I could say it's it. I feel like it's it's been good that they've included us. Um, the uh settlement payment was transferred last month. Lot it went through last week. There's million dollar payment. Now, as per the settlement agreement, so they made it in. Um, so we have that in place. And now they're talking about uh they've started the process to transfer the CAP water allocation. Uh, we expect that to take six to nine months. So that just started, I think, over a month ago. So by the end of the year, we think that'll be in place for beginning of the spring. And all that from a logistical standpoint, they'll just be a matter of uh who places the order. So the orders are due with the CAP in um September, end of September. So I'm assuming the transfer's not done, so I'll be placing an order for those accounts. And then as it transfers over, we'll have to work with the CAP staff to make sure that we're accounting for whose whose allocations are coming from at that point. Another headache. And and Carefree does want to start working on some some, you know, instead of taking over the large areas, they've talked to us about taking over some smaller bites of some areas, including go one area that they want to try with us. It's changing out some meters. It's a small neighborhood. It has about fifteen, I think it's fifteen meters. They want put their meters in it while we're serving water and see how we can transfer the account data between the two systems because logistically, they're not, you just can't turn the the pipes on and off and change out all the meters. So we're trying to work with them to to uh impact the systems as as minimal as possible. So that's the next step. So we're working through design. We're probably going to try this uh one test area with the metering and see how that's going to work. And then I can come back and I'll I'll keep counsel informed on what we're doing. Uh, project that we're doing down at our water ranch. Yeah, this is kind of a a unique one. I wanted to bring up to your attention. There's been a lot of work down there. I'll give kudos to the uh the staff down there and our maintenance staff have been working just to and the facility is ten years old. It's a a wastewater facility, so it's years, it sees a severe environment. It runs twenty four seven. So uh you are actually seeing pictures of a diver that we had to bring in. So uh we drive, uh, the divers can actually go into the basins live. The the picture on the uh the right hand side is is one of our um our uh sequence batch reactors are RSPR basins uh without any uh liquid in it. And you can see what at the bottom of the picture, you'll see what they're called aeration heads. So we actually have an air compressor system that pushes air down into those, and it actually sends bubbles up through those heads has two purposes. The one is it provides oxygen for the microbiology to can help uh break down the wastewater stream and actually also mixes the system. So one of the two basins, we're having some trouble with, and we were afraid also of how much debris had potentially collected in this because we actually are having some issues in the headworks at the plant. So the driver uh two fold, he went into all the basins, looked around to uh uh verify if there's debris in them. And then uh verified that it's air system is broken. And we did find we were having uh the operators were struggling with uh our SBR basin number two, and we found that one of the down legs was actually broken. So instead of getting all the air to those diffusers, we were sending a lot of air out of one corner of the of the basin. So we brought the but divers back, and they did a temporary repair, and now we're talking about a permanent repair that may one might want to do. But um yeah, they did find a lot of material, but not in the two um uh uh process basins. We found it in in the um uh uh the sludge basin had a significant amount of debris that will perhaps that work with them on a project to actually clean that out. It's kind of unique because the divers can do it while the system's live. So they'll go through and and pull off the debris and decant it and send it back through the clean liquid. So uh we plan to hopefully do that in the next few months and try to get that um uh uh sludge basin cleaned up. It's one of those more unique things you don't usually see. And yeah, again, and he's the owner of the company who went down, so.
He has two hundred, two hundred hours underwater, but it's saltwater.
They did a good job. I'll give them that. And ironically, you can't see anything when he's down there. He's doing everything by touch and feel.
So yeah, I'm not surprised.
So um our collection system is something, obviously, we're doing the assessment. Uh, next slide, Brian. And uh one thing that we've talked to council a lot about uh since I've been here and before is our Rancher Mianana lift stations. I wanted to show you some improvements that we've uh been making. Uh, what you're seeing is the slab area that got poured, uh, which is south of the site. So with our public work staff last, uh, I think it was during the fall, we actually removed the basin there, the bait, the berm that was there and gave us better access to the site. Uh, it, we actually did some piping modifications at the site so that proved useful having this area because we actually do some of our pumping, and then the staff can actually go up. Uh, we can do our crane truck up here and actually lift the pumps out more easily from this this. So we're going to continue doing some improvements. Didn't cost as much to put that in, and actually also gave us a place to put an odor scrubber. So we actually now have what was a passive little carbon overscrubber. We actually have now what we refer to as an active. So you can see in the bottom slide, there's actually a fan drawing air off the wet well. And it goes through that canister. Um, it's actually two two folds. At the bottom, it's actually cedar chips, which actually absorb the water, and then above it is is activated charcoal. Um, and that actually consumes the uh the the odors. So I think it's made a marked improvement out there. So I know that has been an issue, and when we had the bypass pumping going on uh past April, you could smell it out the golf course. I'll be honest, you it it didn't smell good. So that's partly because the lid was open and we didn't have an odor scrubber system. So our goal is to try and improve that site and continue to enhance it. We are working with the pump supplier because we've been continuing to investigate uh the fact that the flows aren't as high, and we actually found the original um submittals and specifications for the pumps out there, and they're not working as designed. We believe it's partly because the uh what's referred to as the dynamic head on the pipeline system on the eight inch force main is is higher than was anticipated. So those pumps are working, what we refer to as off their curve. So uh we're talking to vendor about some other improvements. Uh, we also think that while we've done some piping improvements to the site, uh, one thing we just observed in the last couple of weeks is that where the the pumps actually sit in the bottom of the wet well. We haven't observed this before, but we're starting to see some leaking. So we're losing pumping efficiency. So we're actually going in uh next week uh to do some further investigation, but we might have to replace that that bottom elbow. When we were in there just last year, it was not found to be a problem. We think there's some additional where this happened. So the pump is not fitting properly. So we're losing some pressure at the the pump base. So uh that's the next two steps that we're going to try to improve. And sorry, I'm going along here. Our distribution staff, next slide, Brian. Uh, I've been very busy. Uh, you know, you can see some credit here. So you know, one thing that we've been doing here is instead of just, you know, doing a quick rap on something, we try to replace. So we do been doing a lot of service line repairs. Staff often find that they stay, they find multiple repair bands have been placed on a service line, so it's better to replace it in time, and we hopefully don't see that thing again for the next forty years is really our goal. Um, and again, they also had some large breaks that they've had to deal with. So I'll give kudos to, again, my distribution staff are just like everybody are all working and trying to do a lot of improvements in system and just keeping stuff. We're spending a lot of time just still uh mapping the system and just uh finding valves similar to, you know, even more so than the collection system with buried manholes. Uh, the 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 valves are a lot easier to to get lost under uh someone filling in their their front yard. So that's that's still a struggle for us. Next slide, Brian. The last three months have been busy just in our overall maintenance crew. Our our crew actually does a lot for us. Uh, the bottom uh right slide is showing our desert hills, our Seventh Street Booster Station. So there's was a lot of work done and actually was done with Public Works. Uh, the trees were completely overgrown around that site. So Public Works came in. We actually tried to reach out to some vendors uh um to give us some quotes, and a couple of them just basically refused. They said they're just too busy. So it was a a good day's work for our public work crew, and they just they cleaned that site up immensely. I'm surprised. And then we followed that up by going in and actually looking at the site itself. We've had a few issues. This site provides basically in desert hills, all the flow uh for north of Joy Ranch Road um in the system. Uh, so we had a couple of issues out there, and and part of that was going back to, you know, we looked at the initial mapping, and there was three different conflicting drawings and how the site was configured. So we we spent a couple of days exposing piping to make sure that we knew how it all worked, and we found some new stuff about how the site works. So that makes it more efficient for us. So this is a good effort. The staff went through and again, we worked with our public work staff to do that. The next picture over on the bottom, you'll see that's one of the pumps out of our near booster station. We couldn't find any records of those pumps being pulled since they were put in operation in late two thousand nine, I believe. So we had one of them pulled out and we basically had to rebuild all the impellers. It's a five stage impeller system. So. Now we know we're getting into, there's still two more left. So our goal is to pull those out and get them serviced. You can see, we also have been working on the pressure reducing valves. The way our system works is is at our nearest site. We these large pumps boost the pressure up to the the pressure that actually feeds the town core system. And then we have a a large, it's a ten inch diameter pressure reducing valve. But then cut some of that pressure down so it can move down down the hill, luckily down Cave Creek Road. And then it goes through a couple of other PRVs and we distribute it. So. Yeah, the staff have actually rebuilt those, all the PRVs on that site. And we've been working our way through the system. There's just a, I think they're all been touched now. The near one was one of our last ones. And I think we put it on notice. We did put it on notice, I think. Because the potential outage area that if this wasn't coming back in service was very large. All the way out to Twenty Fourth Street affecting the system from from the town core. So give kudos to the staff. They did it quickly and efficiently and we actually kept everybody in water. We did reduce pressure, but we kept everybody in water. So. The last one, cast might remember a few months ago, we had a the resident next to our Carol Heights Booster Station. Was concerned. We had some issues with, we were trying to clean up with the fires last year. We went around to a lot of our sites and we're trying to clear debris away from the fence lines. We thought that we actually had our our the, we had some area outside this fence. We actually went and had a contractor come in and clear the area. Then we found out that actually we had. For trespass, so. But as part of that, we actually also gave us room to put up a new, what was put in when the site was reconstructed back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine was actually just a six foot high chain link fence. So. The neighbor is immediately adjacent to it. So now we've got a solid eight foot fence, eight foot is more typical standard for a water facility and it it's a solid metal fence. So it'll, it'll start to rust here, rustify out a little bit. But it'll be, I think, a significant improvement and it has cut down the noise just to the neighbors next to them. So our goal is to be a good neighbor to our our adjacent landowners. And this one secured the site a little bit better, so. And that's, I know I've been talking here for a while. I apologize. We've got a lot going on and and in in the system overall. Again, I can't thank my staff enough for all the work that they do. And we're trying to get more better information for council. So it does take time, but we're committed to doing that because it helps us run the system more efficiently. So.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Is there any way that we can bring the demand and the supply? Of our wastewater with regard to supplying Rancho Manana in line. I mean, I don't think we can do pump storage. With wastewater. But obviously we have an issue with producing more water in the winter. They need it in the summer. Is there some way to equalize that?
Well, it's actually, I just was reading through the the master plans recently because I'm trying to work as part of the rate model, looking at our capital program going a little bit longer, the capital program, but. It's been identified in the two thousand eight and even prior to that, and then the two thousand thirteen master plan we're talked about. Really trying to do some recharging with that water. It's just a common problem with. In in the, in Arizona, specifically Miracle County, when you do a reclaimed water system, the demand for irrigation. Because that's typically what you use your if your 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 purple pipe system for goes down in the winter time when your wastewater flows your highest. So what most jurisdictions do, most water operators do is they actually do a balance system where you have a some sort of recharge system. So you can put that back into the ground and get credits for it. So when it's not being consumed. You can, you can, you basically have a dual system. You're either sending it to customers or you're putting it in the ground to get ground credit. So that we're missing that second leg. We're not putting it into the ground.
That ground then would be a bank essentially a banking.
Correct.
And then off underground.
Yeah, as it was mentioned earlier, you know, we do the overflow of the lake. Is there a way for us to get that permitted as a, as a, what they call an unmanaged facility? So we can get credits for it, or do we want to come up with a managed facility or do something else? That's something we do need to sit down and look at. And I hope to with the next master plan to map that out. There are some permitting issues involved. Initially, when the 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 water ranch was constructed at Carefree Highway, there was actually the original concepts had had recharge facilities. At that site. If council is not aware, there is the old landfill site directly south of that. There actually is water quality issues with that landfill. So it was. At the point, there was not going to be a permit issued because the potential for us recharging just north of Carefree Highway could flush that water out when they're actually trying to treat and remove the contaminants from the system over there.
And my other question is with the Rockaway Hills tank, do I understand that we are not filling that up? Because if we have interruption in our water supply coming up from the CAP canal. Then we need to draw from our storage. And is that are we having less storage in the Rockaway Hills tank than than the capacity of the tank?
Well, again, that's going back to how we have to manage the system for, you know. Wet water in the pipes is important, but also water needs all permit requirements is also important for us too. So. It goes back to the other processes that we're spending a lot more time on general maintenance and things like the cat pipeline. So we're spending a lot more time on inspecting and maintaining the booster pump stations. Make sure they're operational. And then also the treatment plant itself is a lot more reliable than I think it ever has been between the pole trailers and the work that's been done on the existing Trident unit. So. The the likelihood that we'd have a significant outage, especially at the water treatment plant, because we do have between the 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 four existing Trident membranes. Systems and then the Paul systems, we have a lot of treatment capacity there. We're only permitted for three million gallons a day average, but we have a lot more treatment than that between the two. So we have a lot of flexibility there, something were to go down. The cat pipeline is still a concern, but we're working with Phoenix. I'm making sure that anytime anybody works around it, we're informed and better informed about it. And again, with all the work the staff have been doing to improve the reliability of booster pump stations. We feel a lot more comfortable of that that we can put the water into the system as as demand requires it, rather than having seeing in storage and then having. Water age issues and other water quality issues to deal with. So we have to, that is a balance that we have to deal with. And this, the the reservoirs are designed to flex. They'll never be fully full. So you you fill a reservoir and you expect it to drop because. It you use that to buffer your your system demands rather than having all that instantaneous treatment capacity. There are two different demand cycles. Balancing back.
Thank you.
Mayor. I wa- I wonder at this point in time, if I could ask if if we could go ahead and postpone the questions until the end of the meeting and out of. Respect for the three experts that are sitting waiting for us to continue this.
You can do that as the mayor.
I can do that. All right. Let's let's go ahead and do it. Sorry, Sean. You get to hang around. We're on back to agenda item number one, which is a council approval engagement letter with Wedbush Securities Incorporated to serve as municipal advisor to the town of Cave Creek on a WIF a loan to be refunded. Hi, Pat. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Can you hear me now?
Absolutely.
Great. Okay, Mayor members of the council, what you have before you is the same thing you had a few months ago where it is the engagement letter to hire. Jim Strickland from Wedbush Securities as your municipal finance advisor. He represented the town very well in the last deal where we got a refunding and and did a lot of work to get that deal done and saved the town a lot of money. And and if you had a chance to review what he's handed out, I think you're going to see the same thing. So this this particular action is just to approve. The engagement letter with him and then we'll get into the refunding. Jim Strickland is on the line as well as Tim Stratton, who is our bond counsel.
Having questions from council. Councilman Silva.
I have a question regarding the contract. It's a lump sum contract. Are these ever done on a cost basis, bill per hour? With perhaps a floor and a ceiling or not to exceed number? Or did the RFP from the town go out? As a lump sum.
Oh, Mayor members of the council, it wasn't an RFP, and this is the normal billing that is done by financial advisors. Based on the amount of bonds. And even though the bonds have increased, I I think the the pricing is still the same. Jim, did you want to speak to it?
Mayor members of the council. I understand the question. Is is this ever done on an hourly basis? And the the general answer is no. It's a, it's on a project by project. Basis in the event that we don't hit our targets or the savings isn't there and there's no. Actual transaction consummated, we don't get paid anything. And so it's a, it's only based on whether or not we achieve the expected. Results within the parameters of the authorizing resolution. Which I I believe is similar to the way bond counsel and other professionals involved with. Public finance matters are are handled.
I think you answered the second question I had, and that is. If for some reason the rates go crazy in the next few days and you're not able. To get a rate of less than two percent. Then I'm going to assume the fee is not earned and not payable. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And and then my one more question, and that is I. I looked through everything and. It's, it led me to believe that we were, that the eight hundred thousand dollars approximately we were saving. Was through a reduction in the interest rate. My question is, I didn't have the information. If we're going to get something of what you're proposing, less than two percent. What's the current rate we're paying? Is it like between three and four or three or three and a half?
Three point four nine percent.
Three point four nine? Okay, so that's that's makes up the bulk or all of the anticipated eight hundred thousand dollar savings.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor, you had some? No? Anyone else? All right, um, there's public comment on this one. Mister Mister Phelps is hanging around somewhere.
I think I'm unmuted.
There you are, Mr. Phil, Mr. Phil.
Hey, welcome back. Ernie, I very much appreciate you making a point that you knew that all these experts were out there waiting to speak. I really appreciate that. Mr. Strickland. I would like to ask you a question about what you would presume to be the hourly investment. Your firm's going to have to make to do this transaction. Number of hours, hundred, thousand, ten?
We don't track hours.
Actually, it's not appropriate for for you to be actually questioning the. Go ahead, Mr. Sims. I know you're going to say the same thing.
Public comments. Public is allowed to make comments.
Public comment.
Is not allowed to enter dialogue with the the town consultant.
Did you hear that, David?
Yeah, I keep hearing it. It seems like we got new rules, but I get you.
Well, I've been a little bit lax in the in the past and we're trying to get a little.
Well, I wouldn't blame you for me. I'll try to pick up a question somewhere else in the meeting. Thank you, though.
He's gone. Oh, any others? We're back to council.
I'll read the motion. Motion to approve the engagement letter with Wedbush Securities, Inc. To serve as municipal advisor to the town of Cave Creek on a WIF a loan to be refunded. No, it's. We're, we're grateful to have their expertise.
Other than it's a road to save money. But this is, this is definitely financial. Could you get a real call, please?
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Diefenfurter.
Yes.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Roye.
Yes.
Mayor Bunch.
Yes, motion carries seven zero, agenda number two. Council approval of resolution number R twenty twenty one dash fifteen, resolution, the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, authorizing the execution and delivery of an agreement and a trust agreement. Revening the sale, execution, delivery of excise tax revenue refunding obligation series twenty twenty one B. Evidencing a proportionate interest of the owners thereof in an agreement between the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, and a trustee. And authorizing and ratifying the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this resolution. That's a lot to read.
Pat Walker, would you speak on this?
Sure. Mayor members of the council, these are the details that were sent out to council on the refunding. The savings is going to be around eight hundred thousand and we're going to save about a hundred thousand a year, which is what we need to save in utilities. To help offset some of the the subsidies that we have. And this is working towards that by doing this free refunding. But Jim's here to answer any questions about the numbers that he provided you as well as Tim Stratton.
Councilmember Morris.
Yeah, I I noticed that we're pledging that two times the excise tax on this. And Pat, keep that in mind because I know that that pledge. Into play in other potential contracts we may do later. But I'm wondering, why are we pledging? Excise taxes on a utility system that has revenues? Why why aren't we pledging a utility revenue?
Jim, you want to take that one or you want want me to?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Pat. The the new loan is a mirror image of the existing loan. So the existing loan that you have with WIFA has a pledge of excise taxes. And your utility revenue is not sufficient to produce coverage that is acceptable to. The WIFA folks. And in the event that we were using a utility pledge. We wouldn't be able to have released the reserve fund. If you remember, one of the actions that we took. In February, March was to release your reserve funds for your loans that you have with WIFA. Because you have excellent coverage on your excise tax debt. You're able to release the reserve requirements. The the pledge is, in the event that there is some issue with trying to make a collection, make a payment to WIFA. That the intended repayment source is the utility. Now, the the reality is that to some extent, operationally, the. General fund is subsidizing the wastewater utility. But the the intent is to repay wastewater debt with wastewater utility revenue. What the savings is going to do is going to reduce the amount of general fund subsidy. So to the extent that we have a hundred thousand dollars a year of savings, you'll be able to reduce down the general fund contribution to the utility system. Each year.
Yes, and the the wastewater system is probably the worst one. We have, we have the poorest revenue. Situation compared to debt. Pat, is this, is this consistent with what we've been talking about with these other contracts?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, are we going to have enough exit income to cover this and any proposed actions there?
Well, if I, if I could, Pat. What we're doing is replacing existing debt with new debt. And the new debt will be a hundred thousand dollars less than the old debt. And so in terms of impact. Financially, your coverage actually will get better by doing this. If if you, if you didn't do anything. Your coverage would be. Not as good as if you do the refinancing and save a hundred thousand dollars more per year. So it only improves whatever else you're doing. It doesn't, we're not adding this. This is not new. It's not a new pledge. It's an existing pledge that's being replaced. For the new loan, we're using the old pledge.
Yes, and and to further answer your question, Councilmember Morris. The. If anything is pledged on excise taxes in the future, it can be pledged as a subordinate lien. So it wouldn't have anything to do with where we were before with this. Other than we're saving a hundred thousand dollars a year on the debt service payment. But anything that would be proposed in the future for any debt would be a subordinate lien.
Vice Mayor.
In the existing with a agreement, there is a requirement for a repair and replace reserve. Is there in this? Will there be a repair and replace reserve requirement in this? Or will it free up some money for the the town's utilization?
Tim, could you answer that?
Yeah, correct. There won't, will not be a requirement for a reserve in replacement fund. For the excise tax bonds because we in essence are, you know, that's something that comes from WIFA as part of the old deal. Because these new bonds are based on your excise tax pledge, we will theoretically free up that money because you won't have to maintain. For these new bonds, a repair and replacement fund. because you won't have to maintain, uh, for these new bonds, uh, a repair and replacement fund.
Yeah, so we'll have, um, X number of dollars available. Looking for a simple answer, I'd, you know.
Mayor and council, um, I think the way that the repair and replacement reserve has worked is that you're required to put so much back into your system every year. And because of the amount of money that Cave Creek has put back into their systems, they've always met that requirement. So there's not going to be money freed up per se. It's just that, I guess, the test isn't there anymore. Is that correct, Tim?
Yeah, that, that's correct, Pat. There's no requirement for that test.
Okay.
So we're basically taking WIFA out of the, out of the.
Have to hold, uh, six or seven hundred thousand dollars off to the side in violet. Just in case, uh, somebody comes along and says, where's the R and R reserve?
Right, so we're good, Mayor and Councilmember.
All right, anything else from council? There's public comment on this one. I do believe that Mister Phelps had a number two on this one as well.
This is David Phelps. My only comment would be, not a question, of course. I very much appreciate the town council leading on this, uh, discussion with questions to help us understand these complex financing arrangements. I'm a little bit flustered, because, uh, when we were younger, we paid the private mortgage insurance. And I feel like we're being made to pay the private mortgage insurance, even though we've never missed a bill. We've never missed a payment. We do save reserves, uh, innately. We do, we are running the plant better than it's ever been run before. There are more people using the plant than it's ever been used before, and I feel like we're paying, we're, we're doing a great job on the rate, but we're doing a bad job on the terms. And I just really wish that we could carve out some of these TPT encumbrances that are required for borrowing this kind of money. You know, we're in over fifty percent ownership position. I'm just perplexed as to how this, what I'm going to call usury continues, and you know, how somebody hasn't figured out how to get around it, I guess. All right, that's not a question, that's a comment. Thank you.
All right, we're back. And anybody else on that one? We're back to council.
I'll read the motion. Council approval of resolution number R twenty twenty one dash fifteen. A resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, authorizing the execution and delivery of an agreement and a trust agreement. Approving the sale, execution, and delivery of excise tax revenue refunding obligations. Series twenty twenty one B, evidencing a proportionate interest of the owners thereof in an agreement between the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, and a trustee. And authorizing and ratifying the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this resolution.
Comment, Councilwoman Roy?
No, I, um, I think again that this is, um, a good transaction for this town, and we're saving some money, and I appreciate, um, the work that went into it.
Uh, this is, uh, certainly an appropriate action to take, considering the, uh, the fact that, uh, interest rates are still relatively low. Uh, we would be remiss if we didn't do this.
It's always enjoyable to spend money, fifty thousand, when basically the net result is you're saving seven hundred and fifty.
Right.
I'll always take those.
And, and this is basically like a refinance charge, and these folks are handling the transaction for us with WIFA. Councilman Morris?
Yeah, I, I, this is slam dunk, um, and, and it's, uh, I look at it, it's, it's, it's more than one firefighter. Because this, this continues on for eight years, and I, I want to compliment staff. Pat, you're, you're the representative, so I compliment you on the initiative in bringing this forward. It's another good one.
Agree. Thank you, Pat.
And this one obviously is, uh, financial as well, so roll call, please.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Deefenderfer.
Yes.
Councilmember Sova.
Yes.
Councilmember Royay.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Bunch.
Oh, yes, motion carries seven zero. We're on to agenda item number three. Council consideration possible approval of resolution number R twenty twenty one dash fourteen, resolution, the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, appointing the town of Cave Creek Town Manager, caring director, chief financial officer of the town for the purpose of submitting the annual expenditure limitation report to the Arizona Auditor General's office for the fiscal year twenty twenty two. Pat?
Mayor members of the council, this is a state statute requirement. Um, every year, there's an alternative expenditure limitation report that's due to, um, the auditor general, and, um, the person that's the official chief financial officer appointed by council is the one that has to sign that report and attest to its accuracy. And so, um, you, you currently don't have a chief financial officer per se, so it's normal that the city manager or town manager would be appointed to that position in order to sign that report, and you have to do so every year by July thirty first.
Questions?
We're just.
Our hands are, sound like our arms are twisted behind our backs, and, and we've got a yell uncle here.
Carrie's not here to defend.
Carrie's not here to defend herself, right, Tom? Um, there's public comment on this one? Nope, we're back to council for a motion, please. Vice Mayor?
Okay, motion to approve resolution number R twenty twenty one hyphen fourteen. A resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, appointing the town of Cave Creek Town Manager, carry direct as chief financial officer of the town for purpose of submitting the annual expenditure limitation report to the Arizona Auditor General's office for the fiscal year twenty twenty two.
Second.
Our arms are behind our back, right?
I, I, I really think we should, uh, put as much responsibility on, on her shoulders.
Let's do the roll on this one, too. We got it, we got it going good.
Yes.
Councilmember Deefenderfer.
Yes.
Councilmember Sova.
Yes.
Councilmember Royay.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Vice Mayor, or Mayor Bunch.
Yes, yes, motion carries seven, uh, seven zero. Uh, Pat, thank you for hanging around tonight. We appreciate it, you know. It's always a pleasure, uh, having you present to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda number four, council discussion, possible approval of resolution number R twenty twenty one dash sixteen, authorizing the town manager executing agreement and implementing documentation binding the town to pay costs associated with an allocation of three hundred and eighty-six acre feet per year of non-Indian agricultural, Prince NIA, closed print, Central Arizona Project Water. I think I met you in Tucson two years ago.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, we do have, uh, besides myself, we have Michelle Vanqueethan, who's actually helping, uh, the town in, uh, water resource issues, uh, legal issues on board to, um, I'll go through a presentation to sort of explain what, uh, this water is about. What's going on, and then Michelle can correct all the mistakes I think.
That'll work. Hey, Sean, would you put the microphone a little bit closer to you?
Okay. So, uh, going back a little ways, uh, you know, when the, uh, state got, uh, Central Arizona Project Water, Colorado River Ra- Water, uh, in nineteen eighty-three, the, there was an allocation, uh, where it was basically divided up, and I'll show a slide later, which shows the, sort of the priority levels. So it's part of that time, that's when the allocations, like the municipal industrial, uh, water allocation that was given to Cape Water Company at the time, went through. And there's also Indian communities and non-Indian agricultural users were given allocations. Um, over time, not all of the, um, uh, non-Indian agricultural, uh, groups actually utilized all their allocation. Um, but just to give you, uh, feedback, uh, the town's allocation is two thousand six hundred and six acre feet of municipal and industrial priority water. Uh, one acre foot is about three hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons of water. Uh, in last calendar year twenty twenty, we did not use all that allocation, so we used, uh, I think it came up earlier, just about twenty, just under twenty-two hundred acre feet of that water, and that went, uh, about fifteen hundred acre feet, uh, went to, uh, providing water sources in Cave Creek, and that's also for the carefree customers directly connected to our system. We sent three hundred and thirty-six acre feet to Desert Hills to help supplement the system out there. And then we sent, uh, just under forty-nine acre feet of, of, of raw cap water to Ranch Mignon to meet our contractual obligations, uh, with them. So I, I will point out, as I pointed out in my other presentation, uh, the twenty-six oh six is our current number, i- is currently in flux. The fact that, uh, three hundred and seventy-eight acre feet of that is actually going to be, uh, transferred to Carefree Water Company as part of the settlement agreement for separating the water systems. Next slide, Brian. So as I said, you know, in nineteen eighty-three, when the allocations were being divvied up, uh, one of the priorities was called non-Indian agricultural water, NIA water. And then some of the agencies that, uh, that did, uh, receive it, did not use, utilize all their allocations. So over a number of years, they did not continue to use that reallocation. So in two thousand thirteen, Arizona Department of Water Resources started to look at a process to actually, uh, firm that water up and, and offered that up. And in, uh, two thousand thirteen, the town actually saw that as an opportunity to secure water resources for Desert Hills. Um, so when the town purchased Desert Hills Water System, one of the first things the master plan had pointed out is that it was a, a groundwater-based water system. They actually were, uh, getting a transfer of some water from, uh, basically a bulk water sale from the Cave Creek Water Company at the time, uh, through the Cloud Road, uh, waterline, the interconnect site at Twenty-Fourth Street. Uh, but they did not have what was referred to as a secure, um, and renewable, uh, surface water supply. So when the application went through in, in June of, uh, two thousand thirteen, there was a resolution the town council put in place, and it was really put aside to create a, a water resource for Desert Hills that didn't exist, uh, for, for CAP water allocation. And, uh, at the time, uh, there was a, a thought that the more water would be available, so the application resolution actually allowed for up to thirteen hundred acre feet of, of, uh, NIA water. And the cost of, uh, one, uh, one thousand three hundred eighty-eight acre feet, that actually was just a capital cost associated with water. That was what the estimate was back in two thousand thirteen. So like anything in water resources, it takes a number of years. And, uh, now we're in twenty twenty-one, and now finally we're coming to a conclusion of an application process that the, 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 the town and, uh, ADWR had started back in two thousand thirteen. Next slide, Brian. So it was just this, uh, um, January that we've got notified that, uh, oh, we would actually be getting an allocation of three hundred and eighty-six acre feet, and there's a letter associated with the package that shows the, uh, the costs associated with that. I think we received that, uh, letter, uh, in May, I believe it was. So instead of the thirteen hundred acre feet of water, uh, of, of now Indian agricultural priority water, we're looking at three hundred and eighty-six acre feet, which is less than what we typically have been transferring the last two years to, to, um, Desert Hills Water System. Uh, but it is getting fairly close. Um, and it does, again, it provides the, a new, uh, Central Arizona Project, Colorado River Water Supply for, uh, uh, Desert Hills. And I'll just jump in right now and say, you know, with the, uh, potential shortages on the system, that is something that we are considering. But it, it does, again, provides a, a surface water supply that currently Desert Hills does not have. The cost, uh, total is, uh, one thousand nine hundred and sixty-one, uh, dollars fifty-one cents, uh, for a total of, of, um, just under eight hundred thousand dollars for the water. That's made up of two components. One is the back capital costs, and one is some other operational costs. When I say back capital costs, when, uh, when we pay for our current CAP allocation, it actually has two components. One is that, uh, as water users, we're all paying for a proportional share of the cost of construction, a multi-billion dollar facility, the Central Arizona Project, and the three hundred plus, uh, miles of canal in the Booster Palm Station. So they, they, uh, distribute that, um, against all the water orders placed, and then you also play an operational cost for moving that water. The water itself doesn't have a, a cost to it. You're actually paying for, again, the, the facilities to move that, and then the cost of running those facilities, in effect. It, well, the option we were given at the time, uh, we could either make a lump sum payment for seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars, or we could spread those over five equal installments, uh, for two and a half percent, uh, interest. Uh, it's seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, to, uh, just done, uh, five fifty-nine. So that's what we've built into this year's budget proposal. Uh, we added it into the Water Resource Fund within the town's operational budget. Um, and that's that the first payment is identified within that. So the actual, this is just paying for the back costs. So as we move forward, if we do place an order, because, uh, the, um, the delivery schedule for CAP water is that they do it by calendar year, and we work on a fiscal year budget, uh, that we'd place the order. And currently, all of the funds for the cap orders are actually in the Cave Creek Water Company. So it's something we'll have to work on as, as moving forward. We can transfer some of that in, but, in fact, I look at it as we'll have to be placing two orders. We'll place a, um, uh, CAP order for, uh, Cave Creek, and we'll pay, uh, place a CAP, uh, order, a separate CAP order for Desert Hills. Uh, the one question we have this year is they've, uh, because of the potential shortage, we believe next year, uh, we, uh, are most likely, if we pursue this and move forward with it, get this through any six acre feet, that that money, that was, that amount of water would be available. If the drought continues and shortages, uh, proceed following years, that might lessen. Uh, but, so it's not as high priority, but it is, it is a water supply. Next slide, Brian. So why is, uh, one of the pros is that, again, uh, as I indicated in my presentation earlier, and I've talked to council before about, is the, the groundwater, uh, the groundwater, uh, that, um, Desert Hills has available to it, and the, the, the three existing walls that we have functionally out there, the groundwater table is dropping, and the amount of water available, uh, as the walls, uh, groundwater drops is decreasing more rapidly than just you would expect. Just because it is shallow basin up there, and it doesn't recharge itself very much. So the town does run the Desert Hill system. We have just over seventeen hundred accounts, and we do have an obligation to provide water for these, uh, customers. So this is part of an overall water portfolio solution for the town, trying to bring this together. The NIA water, non-Indian agricultural water, while, while being a lesser priority than our municipal industrial, is still a surface water supply. Um, and, uh, right now, Michelle can let me know if I'm mistaken, but I think that the cost is, there's been some other discussions about trying to buy a more secure or a higher priority water allocation, and it could be as, as expensive as fifteen to twenty thousand dollars per acre foot to buy higher priority water right now. So, um, it's not cheap water resources, and it's just something that we have to, to balance out. And again, when you talk about water portfolios, again, we're not using all of our allocation right now. I know there's been discussions since I've been here about trying to, uh, uh, look at recharging and doing some, uh, water banking. We have not, uh, been able to get that done, probably just because of the resource availability myself. But that is something that you, you, when you talk about water resources, you have to have a long-term vision of what you're trying to deal with. You don't, you need to look at what, what the, the system would be building out and what you would be needing. So I just point that out. We already, the town already has the infrastructure to deliver, uh, the water, so we can move it up the pipeline. We actually have treatment capacity right now. And again, we can either expand it capacity or, or combine it with our City of Phoenix connection to deliver it to it. So, uh, we, we have a lot of pluses for it. And then, uh, a long term, there is an opportunity to bring this in to, uh, again, right now, we're supplying over six hundred acre feet a year to Desert Hills to help supplement their system, and that is one of the reasons why the town elected to move forward in two thousand seventeen with a water policy to, to, I hate to say restrict, but it does provide some restrictions on, on growth in the system, because we couldn't, uh, secure up and firm up all the water resources. So this gives us another, uh, tool. It's not, again, security isn't there with the drought continuing. It's going to take a long time to, and I'm not sure what the final results are going to be, but it's another, uh, uh, tool in our water resource chest as we move forward. Excellent. So when I talk about priorities, and I probably should have brought this a little earlier, you'll see here, this is sort of the, the common graphic you'll see, uh, when you talk about the CAP. It's sort of shaped like the canal itself, and as the water drops, the, the lowest priority waters at the top, you can see the excess water is the, the, the least secure. It's, it's done on sort of one-time basis, once available, then you have the agricultural pool below that. The NIA water is the yellow bar on that, and then below that is the municipal and industrial, the M and I water. Um, so again, that's the most secure. At this point, uh, we've been told, uh, there, there's going to be a declared shortage, a tier one shortage for calendar year twenty twenty-two on the Central Arizona Project Canal. Uh, we believe it may be dipping into the N and I water allocation, but they've said at this point that we anticipate that we would, if we proceed with this, we'd still be able to, we'll most likely get three hundred and eighty-six next year. The following year, if it still continues, then that will start to drop, and then the NIA water will become less, more vulnerable to outages. So there would be reductions on it. So, uh, while we'll be paying for some of the water, we might not be able to get all of it. And when I say we pay for it, when you have a water allocation, you do still have to continue. We have to. We have to pay the back, and the resolution tonight is to allow us entering the contract. And part of that is the financial obligation of paying the back capital charges on the water. But moving forward, once this water is in our portfolio, there's an obligation that we continue to pay the capital charges on this. If you don't use it, then you don't pay the operational component on it, and it's something that gets balanced out at the end of the year. So there will be an ongoing cost to this, but again, it does add to our overall water portfolio. Next slide. So I want, you know, highlight some of the cons. I've talked about a few. Again, we do continue to have those capital costs moving forward. The NIA water, when the town entered into the two thousand and thirteen request for this water, there was a thought, working with Arizona Department of Water Resources, that up to seventy percent of the water at the time that Arizona Department of Water Resources would would consider it secure enough that it could be used to issue long-term certificates of assured water supply against. That has decreased to the point now that ADWR basically won't consider this to secure water to issue certificates again. So it's we in Desert Hills, there's only a handful of certificates, and actually, they're mostly towards groundwater. There is no surface water allocation, so there's none, no difference for that. But moving forward, I think that was one of the discussions that the thirteen hundred acre feet was a number that came out of the two thousand and eight, the town's two thousand and eight master plan, and looked at what the future build-out needs for the Desert Hills water system was. That's actually was a calculated number. It wasn't just sort of a a swing and a stab at it. It was actually calculated. The you still have to, if we don't u utilize the water, you would have to come up with a solution to recharge it, which is something that we've I mentioned earlier, but we haven't put something in place. But that's something I hope to with the upcoming integrated master plan to actually come up with a plan that we can put both our excess and municipal industrial allocation and or, you know, balance out our water system. Because, you know, things like Rancho Minano, when we're overflowing the lakes, it's just, and it it disturbs me that we're not doing something with that allocation. We can't directly incel M and I water and N and I water. But once we actually do, if we can come up with a a process to store it and generate storage credits on it, then that's something that then we have an opportunity to do something with. And when I say long-term storage credits, that is, it is a long-term process we have to be deal with. Because if we store it in a facility, how do you physically get access? How do we still get water into our pipes? You know, when we think about water resources, it's sort of like a three-legged stool. Once the physical paper water, one is where it's physically is, and the and the last stool piece of the puzzle is how you physically get it into your pipes. And we have to make sure that we have a a system together that pulls all those pieces together, so we're not falling on our our butts. So or I'm not falling on my butt. So the process, next slide, Brian. Is that tonight we're asking American Council to adopt the resolution to allow us to enter into the final subcontract. So the draft, the final draft that we've been given from Central Arizona Project is in the packet. There the resolution does allow for some minor changes, which would we run through legal counsel. Before we do that, we're asking to get authority as staff and the mayor to execute the documents. It was forward. The next thing, because it is actually a federal contract, it actually has to go through judicial confirmation. So there has to be a position, a position. Has to go forward to a federal judge. So that's something that we look to do with some of the other applicants and bring something forward. Could be up to sixty days, get that process. But we can't, we can, well, we might be able to place the orders, they actually can't give us deliveries until that judicial confirmation. So that's why we're sort of the tail end of the process for this year to get this put in place. By the before October first, we'd be placing a water, a water order with Central Arizona Project for this water, for Desert Hills for next year, next fiscal year. And then moving forward, we'd be looking at, you know, how that affects. But what we'd be doing operationally different was that instead of, again, doing one order, which we do right now, we're placing the two orders and then trying to balance that out. That's something I'd like to talk with Central Arizona Project about, because if there is, if we put in for this three hundred and eighty-six acre feet and we can't get all of it, we have to make sure that we can back that up with our our Cave Creek Spies. There is some budgeting, we can allow some buffering, so I think it'll work out in our favor and it'll work out. And then again, right now, we will, moving forward, we will have to adjust some budgets. Right now, as I mentioned, the all of the funding to pay for the cap water, CAP water allocation does show up in the Cave Creek Water System. So for next year's budget, we'll and we'll potentially look at doing a transfer this year as well. If this is, if council lets me forward with this, we'll probably put a line item, or we will put a line item in Desert Hills, they pay for that water directly. We could do it through the bulk water charge between the water companies, which we're doing now, but that was more set up with last year's rate model to more pay for capital expenditures, past capital expenditures. So but we'll look at how we do it. The money was identified in the Water Resource Fund, which was newly created two years ago. So we'll have to, again, we'll properly appropriate this, that it should, or the thought is, we're moving forward, and we're actually just going to be charged to Desert Hills, so the Desert Hills users will have to pay for this. We'll have to build that into the rate study we're currently doing to see what the effects are, as well as, you know, moving forward, and the vulnerability is something that is concerning. But right now, with the drought that's going on in the Colorado River, you know, you know, we have to look long-term, and potentially, if it's not available now, it could be available in the future. But, you know, it's it's hard. So with that, I can answer any questions. Councilman, yeah.
Vice Mayor.
I have a couple of questions and probably intermixed with the questions will be some notices of potential policymaking. What we're doing here is we're talking about is is it buying an entitlement? Because I think allocation is not the correct word. It's usually an entitlement to water. Are we buying an entitlement, the NIA water?
Yeah, I can take that. The it is actually called an allocation, and it is a contract rate. But it's generally considered a permanent right that's based on a lot of rulemaking, so it's it's pretty solid. The actual term of the contract is is a hundred years, but it's probably going to be renewed with no problem.
If the NIA water is taken away from, if we ever get it, if the NIA water is taken away, does that mean that we no longer have to pay for the allocation?
There's a process for a provider to essentially sell its allocation to another provider, and you have to go through a public review process to see if it meets the terms of the original allocation, which is usually some sort of public interest determination. But we've had that happen with M and I contracts throughout the Phoenix area, where some small companies didn't want to keep paying for it, so they would transfer it to another. The I just want to say that, you know, this is difficult. You guys have a difficult decision because we don't know what the reliability of this source is going to be. You cannot assume that Desert Hills will have water every year because of this contract. The the best use of this water would be to store it when it's available and have it underground, and then hopefully it's available enough to use it on a more consistent basis from an underground storage source. The however, you know, the cost is relatively low, but you do need to consider there are ongoing costs. The current capital charge, I believe, is right around fifty dollars or sixty dollars an acre foot per year. So it looks like it'd be, you know, around twenty thousand dollars per year just to have it. That's what you pay, you know, just to have it. But it's water, and there are very few ways to get water. And so, you know, from a water attorney's standpoint, you take water and you ask questions later. But it's going to not be there every year, so.
I understand is Councilmember Morris used to say years ago, it's desert gold. That's history. Will the cost of withdrawing the water from the Cap Canal be the same as withdrawing any other water from the Cap Canal?
Yeah, the rates are the same. So from a contractual standpoint, it is the same cost as our municipal industrial water.
Okay. And I don't know. Is, I'll put it this way, is there work underway consideration of how this will affect the water rates for Desert Hills since personally, I see very little advantage to the town paying for Desert Hills extra for Desert Hills water?
To answer your question, that Pat Mo is going to stay on because I've been having correspondence with her since Thursday. But yeah, it it wasn't fully built into the last rate model because that was completed last summer. So we plan to move forward with it. Just doing some general numbers, it ends up being Oh, Pat's there. It it just the wrong numbers, spreading it out. It's like seven dollars per user per month type of thing. But that's something with the rate model, it's ongoing right now, we want to look at it a little more closely. How 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 can we distribute this money? Since it is a long-term purchase, do we have to cash fund it? Is there other ways of funding this? So it's something we have to pursue. We so we don't have that final answer for.
Yeah, I wasn't really asking, looking for a long discussion, I was more making a point.
Yeah.
Sorry. I know I'm not supposed to do that.
If I, if I can interrupt and build on your question, I'm I'm not quite so sure I understand these numbers. The thirteen hundred and ninety-nine dollars per acre foot, I'm assuming by your write-up here, Sean, that is not a one-time charge. I'm assuming, or am I wrong in assuming that's a yearly charge? Am I correct or incorrect?
The thirteen hundred.
Five years was for the for the twenty, the the past capital expenditures, the two thousand and eighty-three dollars, which comes out times your three hundred and eighty-six acre feet. That's eight hundred and four thousand dollars over five years. That's a hundred and sixty thousand per year. So I I guess I'm I'm having trouble trying to connect the dots on the numbers. The, again, the thirteen ninety-nine per acre foot, that comes out to be five hundred and call it sixty thousand dollars. Is that a one-time charge or is that paid yearly?
The thirteen ninety-nine that was originally anticipated, now that's actually dropped to twelve hundred and ninety-five, ninety-six dollars. That is the back capital cost in that water. So as I indicated, when the Central Arizona Project was constructed, they tried to just structure it that it was the users with the allocations that were paying the back charges, since this municipal industrial water was not fully allocated, not everybody was using it. There's there's some back due payments in effect that we're having to pay for, but then moving.
The question the right way then.
So once, once this payment, once these payments are made, then moving forward, it's really just the fifty dollars, I think it's it's fifty or fifty-four dollars per acre foot is the ongoing capital cost per acre foot moving forward. We're paying off the old debt on the on this water.
Okay, on page fifty-two, this is in our package of one hundred and thirty-seven. It's to request not more than thirteen hundred acre feet at a cost of thirteen ninety-nine. Well, obviously, it's going to be three eighty-six. The way I read that, that's the initial cost for the water. What I'm asking is, and then on page fifty-three of one fifty-seven, in the third paragraph, it's talking about paying the back charges, capital charges, which in in here says two thousand and eighty-three, and you said it's been reduced.
Could I take a stab at it?
Yeah.
So so the thirteen eighty-eight that you were looking at, the charge, that was an old estimate that the previous town council was using for the cost of the water that no longer applies. The the final cost of the water is presented for your decision is on the slide that says final reallocation decision. That consists of two components. And what this was, was it was water that was allocated originally in the eighties to the Penal farmers, and they didn't want to pay for it, so they wanted to give it back. So we are making up the capital charges that the farmers did not pay for that allocation so that it will be even and then start paying, you know, the fifty dollars per acre foot or whatever they set it at every year. So that is just just filling in the amount that was unpaid associated with this water allocation of three hundred and eighty-six acre feet. The six hundred and sixty-five dollar charge is added on to that, and it's called NIA charges in the slide. But what that is, is a settlement amount that was paid to the farmers in consideration of infrastructure that they built in their area for this water, because it was going to be taken away from them. And so it, this is really a settlement amount to get the allocation reallocated. So the upfront charge will be the nineteen sixty-one point five zero per acre foot. That'll be a one-time charge, although you could pay it, as Sean indicated, over five years. That's only once. Then every year, if Sean doesn't order water, you pay the capital charge for three hundred and eighty-six feet, acre feet. Or if it's not available, you still pay the capital charge for three hundred and eighty-six acre feet. And like I said, currently, it's fifty or sixty dollars per acre foot, and that goes on forever. If you order and successfully get three hundred and eighty-six acre feet in a year, there's also an operational and maintenance charge that reflects the cost to pump that water to you through the canal. That's the same as you pay for your existing CAP allocation.
Okay, let let me ask this. Sean, in in his presentation, said that he has a number of seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And he says it can be paid in five equal annual installments at two and a half percent interest. My question is, that's seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. If we were to pay that in a lump sum now, not over five years, added on to the the other fees, that's the total that we would pay out now, correct?
It'd be seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars.
If we paid it in a lump sum.
We save the two and a half percent interest for the five years.
Write a check for seven eighty-eight, and we would be.
Seven fifty-seven.
Entitled based on availability, three hundred and eighty-six acre feet. And then in subsequent years, the only cost we would have is then the fifty or sixty dollars per acre foot multiplied by no more than three eighty-six, but we're a lesser allocation. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
So we either have a lump sum payment, or again, the option that we're proposing is to do, spread it over five years, and and their interest rate is two and a half percent is what they've they've offered to us for spreading those payments over. And then once that, paying off the back back debt that's due on that water, then it's just a fifty dollars per acre foot moving forward. If we use it, then we.
Reading this, the way I took it is, you only have one opportunity to buy into this game, and it's now. You can't come back in a year or two and say, get into it now.
That's that's our understanding with talking with CAP. It's it's taken a long time to come to this process. You know, it's it's sad that it's coming at the same time as as we are looking at potentially the first shortages on the the cap water supply. But, you know, the water world is is a long-term game in in effect. So, yeah, what they've been told is that if we don't ask for this, then they will offer it up to the other people who have made their allocations, who in most cases ask for more water than they're currently getting. So I'm assuming it'll be absorbed. I believe there's twenty other recipients in total. So the CAP will just take this water, and then if we don't enter in this contract this year, it'll go away, and it won't be available next year for us to go after.
Just so it's crystal clear in my mind, if we, and I I I would suggest we go ahead with the five-year payment, which would come out to be approximately a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, or or right now, we'd write a check for one sixty. And then what would be the total amount for the initial buy-in?
Well, the one sixty is our first year of of payment, and then we do a monthly payment for the water that we use, or the the fifty dollars per three hundred and eighty.
So so I'm wrong in.
Per year.
Multiplying thirteen ninety-nine or a lesser amount times three eighty-six, that's not applicable anymore.
Yeah, I apologize for that's the confusion, just because I've I've tried to put some history into the the council report, and the the three ninety-nine should have been, or thirteen ninety-nine should have been thirteen eighty-eight on the first page. That's actually the resolution. I was just trying to provide the history. At the time that the application was made in two thousand and thirteen, that's what was being presented.
We decide to go forward with this, using the five payment plan.
Yeah.
What will our two thousand and twenty-one payment be approximately?
It's a hundred and it's a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars, I believe.
Okay, okay. And subsequently, it'd be a hundred and sixty thousand plus the usage for another for for subsequent years.
Yes.
For the back capital costs. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman Morris.
I'm going to show my conspiratorial side here. But this is a question. We asked for this water fifteen years ago, thereabouts, and we've been waiting on it ever since I've had anything to do with the town and the water companies. And just when there's no water, or there may not be any water, now it's there, we got to make a decision right now or it's gone. Doesn't that seem a little odd to anybody else that there's something going on in the background that maybe Michelle wants to take that one?
Oh, we, I mean, we've been watching this process for years, so we knew it was coming. It may, it may be, you know, that you aren't watching it like we are. Unfortunately, it's ad nauseam. I think probably Catherine used to see it a little bit. Unfortunately, it's ad nauseam. I think probably Catherine used to see it a little bit.
So there, i- is, is there something else going? Is, is somebody behind this? The farmers or what? I mean, why, why, when the water is just about to be um, allocated? Why is it suddenly an emergency uh, to uh, it's suddenly made available and you have to pay for it right away?
It's taken them so long. I think people are really impatient to get it done, probably. And they want to be able to give it out by twenty twenty-two. They made promises a few years ago to, to meet the deadline and they got up against the deadline because it took them so long to work it through with the federal government and everybody who had to be involved.
There's no answer, right?
Maybe it's to pay for the back capital charges.
I, I noticed from your chart, it would appear that, uh, the, well, the, you know, the, the, the one that with the uh, green, orange, blue, and some other color, it would indicate that the first jeopardy is the ag water. And that is before the NIA. And my understanding is there's an awful lot of ag water. So they have, we'd have to go through that before they start cutting the NIA.
Yeah, the, the ag pool water is actually water that is not allocated. It was a special program designed to help those farmers that didn't want to have the allocation, be responsible for the payments, is my understanding. So that was set to go away when everybody else, like the Indian communities, started using more of their water. But the ag pool is really excess. It's, it's just stuff that other people aren't using. So that will go away, just because people will start using their, their water. NIA is actually an allocation. So if the water's there, then there are people with their names on it, and they have a subcontract. But you're right, if, if there's a shortage, it goes from the top down. So the NIA will go completely away before any city um, like Cave Creek will see a shortage in their M and I allocation.
It just looks to me like the so-called learned, long-term contracts would be more protected than the so-called excess.
Oh, absolutely.
So, that's why, again, at this point, our understanding is the, the market rate for that, trying to buy the higher priority uh, uh, more secure water is much more substantial. Uh, you know, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars per acre foot, and then you pay the ongoing cost, but you know, the.
If it's even available, yeah.
Uh, Sean, but uh, how many cities and towns do you estimate are going to partake in this?
Um, I believe we got a copy of the list and it wasn't in the package, but I believe it's almost, it's like twenty applicants total that are getting a portion of this.
Out of ninety-plus cities.
Even Carefree is getting some.
Yeah, Carefree is one of the potential recipients. They still have to enter into a subcontract. I think uh, Queen Creek was on there. I thought that's off Peoria, but um, I can't remember.
And in your opinion, you think everybody being offered this will accept it?
I, I do, you know, I actually had a, a conversation with uh, uh, my counterpart, Greg Crossman, and he's, he's trying to bring it to his board. And the thought is that, uh, as was mentioned, is you, you don't, you, you, you pay for water and you ask questions later type of thing. You add it to your portfolio and you can work on how to, how to generate storage credits or do something like that first. You know, water is desert gold. It was, uh, that's actually a really good way to describe it. So how do you best utilize that? And water resources is, is a long-term game. So if you can get some water and you can put it in, as Michelle indicated, if we put it in the ground and we can recharge it, we do have to figure out the full mechanism, um, how that would work. But I, I personally think it's, it's a good, good solution uh, to a problem we currently have. That, you know, we have a, we are running a, a water company that currently has, does not have a renewable water uh, uh, supply in the surface water or even a, you know, another renewable type of water supply. It's reliant a hundred percent on groundwater. And we're back feeding it with our main system allocation.
Refresh my memory, there's, there's eighteen uh, proposed recipients.
Oh, because eighteen, if I was twenty, okay.
And refresh my memory, why is it only eighteen and not more?
Uh, I'm not sure, Michelle, if you know that back in two thousand and thirteen when it became available, I'm not sure if everybody else had other solutions in place. A lot of other jurisdictions have been doing a lot more things with water banking and, and uh, recharge over the years. You know, a lot of other jurisdictions, the two, other jurisdictions I worked with in the valley, uh, both, um, you know, we did, they didn't have subcontracts for uh, uh, they're affluent from their wastewater treatment plants, so they actually put it in the ground and generate long-term storage credits from them. So it's like, you know, the full water portfolio. So I'm not sure why the eighteen. Michelle, do you have any more history on that or?
I think it was just a cost benefit analysis by the people who filed applications. I think if you look at the, most of the people on that list need water. So I would, I would think that went into the equation when they were determining whether to apply.
I, I'd like to take a, a run at this whole concept and simplify it if I can. We have a short period of time to buy a car. We buy this car and then we continue, we pay it off in five years, but we, in that whole time, we continue to pay the registration, the insurance. And on the years that the gas station has gasoline, we get to drive that car somewhere. If it don't have gasoline, we don't get to drive it. That's the same as what we're doing here exactly. Yep. I just had to simplify that. I mean, it's one of those easy ways of looking at it, so it's, it's uh, more understandable for anybody who might be watching online. I think we figured it out here.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question. One of you asked Sean about using your gas station analogy. When will Desert Hills pay, if any? And my question is, and then, and Pat, you jumped in to, to answer, but I do have a question. As I see it, there's three components of payment. One, the upfront sunk cost for capital. Two, the annual backup fee for capital if not used, and three, the operational. I can see the third, the gas you're consuming at the gas station would be chargeable to Desert Hills. My question for Pat, and is there anything we need to do in documenting this now? How much of the capital can be allocated to Desert Hills, if any?
Not sure if Pat's still on with us.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, she's gone.
Yeah.
I think we should do that in the future rate study.
Well, I, I, I think, uh, Sean, my question is, does town staff recommend that, that the cost of this all be put towards the Desert Hills rates? And we've got two five hundred thousand dollar water tanks to fix. Now we've got uh, seven hundred and eighty-eight thousand over five years perhaps. You know, this, I mean, it's for their benefit. There is, there's absolutely no justification or reason for the uh, for the residents of Cave Creek to subsidize it. In my view, with a staffing.
Uh, I would agree that this should be uh, uh, paid for by the Desert Hills uh, customers. This is actually for their benefit. You know, right now, the, the town, there, the town's been in a, a good position since we've bought and, and, and been operating both water companies and that uh, Cave Creek had a water allocation that as it was um, uh, not being fully utilized. So we were able to transfer water between the companies to balance it out. But long-term, as Cave Creek continues to grow, that water allocation is needed to support the land use and growth of Cave Creek, not uh, Desert Hills. So Desert Hills needs its own water resources.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'm on the phone. I just couldn't get to my mute button fast enough. Um, the way that it's set up now is that we charge a bulk water charge to Desert Hills, and that is calculated based on what it costs to provide that water per one thousand gallons in, from Cave Creek. So we look at all the costs associated with providing the thousand gallons of water that Cave Creek pays. That's what we charge Desert Hills then. So it's six of one, half dozen the other. We can include that cost in that calculation for bulk water charges, or we can include it in the cost when we do the rate study and look at overall what's the revenue uh, needed for, to sustain Desert Hills. So either way, it can be included in the cost and broken out that way.
If we, if we recharge, does that affect the reimbursement? If we use the money, the, the, the water for recharge?
As far as the budget goes.
You know, as far as what we would include in the rate study for Desert Hills.
Yes, we would look at that.
Okay.
Because even if we recharge, it would still be for their benefit. It would be long-term storage credits for Desert Hills Water Company.
Okay.
Yes.
If you're saying, I, I think your answer can be, or uh, your question can be answered uh, by making a comparison to lottery money. Lottery money is absolutely for education. You know very well, it's spent for other things. So this is amorphous. I, I, I gotta tell you this. I, I hate to do this, but I love to do it in another way. When this first came up, the then uh, uh, utility director, Jessica Marlowe, uh, came up with this proposal, went to um, uh, the mayor and uh, council member uh, uh, Tom McGuire, and said, I want to submit this to uh, the uh, the, the powers-to-be. I think that we will need water eventually. And she said, and, and the justification for it is Desert Hills. I know right now, we're only giving them a small amount of water a year, but I know it's going to increase substantially. And so they bought that, and that was when this was submitted. And uh, I just, I just thought at the time, because I talked to her about it, I said, you're really prescient. You, you know what's going to happen, don't you? And she said, yes, I do. That's why I'm going to go to Gilbert.
Where she's now head of utilities.
With a good water portfolio. David mentioned that, you know, the original thirteen hundred number uh, came from the, the initial master plans when they looked at the certificated area for Desert Hills. And if you, you know, you, you look at what the build-out was, was going to be, that's where that number came from, is actually the assumed uh, build-out demand for Desert Hills.
We good here?
Yes.
We ready to go to public comment? Phelps, I know you're, I know you're there listening.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I see this as just an incredible enjoyment to watch uh, Mr. Silva, Mr. Smith jostle this strategy. Guys, this is a way to save five million dollars if we need it. I understand it's a long-term thinking process, but nobody held a gun to our head to buy Desert Hills. Desert Hills has always been a waterless water company that we have supplanted water to. Ernie, I know you were there during the days when we had to do the emergency tie into them and how desperate water need was over there when we bought it. But uh, long and the short of it for me, guys, is I fully didn't grasp this until I talked to uh, Councilman Roya. And she kind of set me straight on ironing out for me the real needs for this, and I thank her for that. I think it's a tremendous opportunity for us to help the neighbors in De- Desert Hills and let them pay for it. Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, David. We're back to, is there any more? Then that's it, we're back to council. You had a motion, please?
I'll read the motion. Motion to approve resolution number R twenty twenty-one dash sixteen. A resolution of the mayor and town council of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, authorizing the town manager to execute an agreement and implementing documentation binding the town to pay costs associated with an allocation of three hundred and eighty-six acre feet per year of non-Indian agriculture, NIA, Central Arizona Project Water.
Second.
Councilman?
I think that there's no way that we could not take this water. Uh, water is Arizona's most precious natural resource. Whether we use it for Desert Hills or not, there's no way that we, as the elected leaders of this community, could turn it down. And it's an opportunity that we must accept. And I am thankful that we have the opportunity to do so.
To build on the mayor's analogy of the car, knowing that there won't be gas all the time. When it's a hundred and ten outside in the summer, I'd rather be riding in a car than walking, even if it's part-time. So factored that in my budget, then there's not gas available.
Comments? This one's definitely financial.
Councilmember Silva.
Yes.
Councilmember Roy.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember DeFender.
Yes.
Mayor Bunch.
Uh, yes, uh, motion carries seven, nothing. Uh, let's see here.
Thank you, Michelle. Mayor, I'm really leaving now.
Oh. You know, I, I just missed you before. I forget, I forgot that you were uh, had some interest in that other item. I, I appreciate your hanging around.
You bet. Thanks.
Uh, okay, let's go on to number six, uh, with the council approval reimbursement request to excess City of Phoenix water development fees to Cave Creek Olson DG LLC for APN two eleven dash forty-six dash three four zero A, Dutch Brothers Coffee Commercial Development, as indicated in section four, fees of the intergovernmental agreement, I G A, with City of Phoenix previously approved on November twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen. We just need to do it again, don't we, Sean?
We do. We're nearly, we're nearly done.
Last one or is there more?
One more last, uh, Brian, you want to bring up presentation? Yeah.
Presentation.
I got some slides. I gotta show grass. I have to explain it, so.
Since we've been introduced, anybody got an objection to paying them what we owe them?
Well, the first slide will show you.
Otherwise, we might have to mortgage that car.
Yeah. All right, next slide, Brian. So, um, and just to clarify, the uh, the actual uh, reimbursement, uh, we actually got the um, the resolution is with um, Cave Creek AZ Development Group LLC. We actually did receive documentation from them that the development right has been transferred to um, Cave Creek Olson uh, DG LLC.
Oh, well, that changes everything.
This, uh, the second slide, Brian. So. Oh, one too many. Uh, so the answer to the mayor's question is yes. Uh, so in two thousand and eighteen, we entered into an I G A with Phoenix to take uh, to address the issue of, of property south of Carefree Highway in, in the town jurisdiction. And uh, as part of that, we actually have a six hundred thousand dollar obligation to pay for Phoenix for the infrastructure. Uh, we actually have a total of four reimbursement agreements in place. Uh, this is uh, one of the four. So I've brought three of them to you previously. As you can see, Dutch Brothers is indicated in red. Uh, it was resolution uh, two thousand and eighteen dash twenty-four. Uh, it's one, there is one more meter to pay for as part of the sprouts development. Uh, uh, council's probably aware that the, the big old tires is being developed there. So that's the last meter on that. So when we came forward with that reimbursement, it was for six of the seven meters on that site. So I'm still waiting to receive. They actually, as of yesterday, had not installed the meter in that box. So they haven't uh, worked out the arrangements with Phoenix and paid the fees for Phoenix. So once Phoenix does that, I'll come back and that'll be the last reimbursement, the final one. Uh, but in total, uh, we've got the four. Once we're done, and some next year, we pay the difference between what uh, has been paid out on these and what Phoenix is, is crediting us for us. Uh, that number is built into our capital program. And right now, it's a hundred and twelve thousand dollars that we built in the capital program for next fiscal year. That will reconcile this. Next slide, Brian. Uh, so again, we've got the uh, agreement in place with um, uh, Cave Creek AZ, Cave Creek AZ Development Group was your initial. But we actually have received a uh, document which shows that they did transfer the development right, uh, including uh, this reimbursement to Cave Creek Olson uh, DG LLC. So we're asking council just to authorize this uh, payment to them and we can reconcile this. And then, once I get the final one, I'll bring that forward and then also reconcile in the capital program what we need to pay, what's owing at the end. So.
Question, counsel?
This one, this one. Assuming Popeye's Louisiana chicken is built, uh, will they be entitled into a reimbursement under the I G A?
No, uh, no, because there's no development grant, reimbursement agreement in place with them.
Perfect.
Yeah, they elected not to move forward with it and, and yeah, they will, actually will be getting a City of Phoenix meter directly, and they're, they're just going to pay that fee.
Perfect.
Yeah. So this will be the end of it.
Yeah, let's see here. There is public comment on this. We have anybody? Okay, we're back to council for a motion, please. Yes, please, Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve reimbursement, reimbursement of excess City of Phoenix water development fees to Cave Creek slash Olson DG LLC for APN two eleven hyphen forty-six hyphen three forty-eight, Dutch Brothers Coffee Commercial Development, as indicated in section four. Dutch Brothers Coffee Commercial Development as indicated in section four, fees of the I G A within City of Phoenix approved on November twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Comment?
We don't pay this. We made a decision a long time ago to pay this, so uh.
We don't pay this. It's gonna do hell with our credit rating.
All right. This one, this one's financial as well.
Councilmember Deefenderfer.
Yes.
Councilmember Solva.
Yes.
Councilmember Roye.
Yes.
Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Bunch.
Uh, yes, motion carries seven zero. And now we will go back to number six. Does anyone have any questions on the presentation on the quarter quarterly utility report? Just one, please.
Uh, I believe as the last week, I believe it was six. So as of this year's annual maintenance, uh, the vendor we had, we had them all in service last year. Some of them uh have gone back out of service. We're working on getting those all back in service. That's our highest priority.
Zero sometime.
Yeah, it fluctuate, you know, every time we go out, some of them are out of service. So, yeah, you know. But as a priority for us.
Any other questions from council?
Yes, sir. Sean, has the town ever looked at the possibility of when we have excess effluent that would, you know, instead of just throwing it away, talk to the people across the street in Phoenix at Dove Valley Golf Club to see if they could use it or uh, you know, it's down, it's it's, it goes downhill. So be gravity fed, it's a short run, depending on where you could put in a pond, or is that all tied up with Phoenix?
Uh, I think we'd have to have that conversation with Phoenix first because it would be part of their service area. So we were providing water in their service area, but I'm not sure if they'd be completely averse to that, you know, it's something we can do. Um, yeah, you know, I'd like to look at all the options available to us um for, you know, uh, to get beneficial use out of that water. Uh, again, if we have the contract with Rancho Minano, obviously we've got an efficiency in the lake system, but it it's just, it really irks me the fact that we know how much water's being going over a a weir and going down a wash, we get no benefit from.
And then my last, you know, question is, is the town working on the sewer smell on the top of the hill on Cave Creek by Mountain View Pub? It's been ongoing. I I know there's been work up there and your crews have been trying, but it still exists.
Oh, okay. You know, I haven't I haven't heard anything directly about it. We actually had an issue a few months ago. What actually happened is we had an odor tray, um, a charcoal old tree in one of the sewer uh manholes that actually had fallen down, actually was holding back. So that was the last time. So that's been a few months ago. Um, you know, we'll go out there and investigate more. It it's hard because of the top end of the system and uh I think we have some issues. It goes down, quick down there uh when you get going towards the east or sorry, the west. But I think we're at the top there. We do want to investigate. There's a a connection to San Sui. That's over three hundred feet. It's a lateral and I want to get that video camera to find out if there's any bellies in that and and figure it all out. But yeah, it's something, it's part of the collection assessment. I'd like to talk to G H D about recommendations up there. That might be a spot that we have to do uh chemical injections long-term to get a solution in place.
Don't we have the apartments going in there that are gonna tie into the top of the line?
Uh, yes, right now, the apartments are planning to tie into that same manhole.
Which which the line will handle the volume. It will really help that by diluting with the residential as opposed to the, all the commercial stuff that's in.
Yeah, getting a little bit more flow at the top end will help it. You know, in the past, the 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 staff were just pushing water down it, you know, you really should jet it out. We actually did have the line jet it jet it out about four months ago. So, but now hearing this, first time I've heard that we've had a problem.
Did you find the right angle turn in front of Harrell's?
Uh, we should actually stop before that.
Before that, yeah.
Yeah.
They 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 didn't know where the right of way was when they were digging the trench and they got down and they went, oh, we need to move this over and made a right angle in a in a four-inch sewer line or six inch, four inch or six inch.
I think it's an eight at that point.
Eight, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We have some interesting manholes in our collection system.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? All right, all in favor? Thank you, cap, thank you, uh, council.